Welcome to tonight's Carson City School Board Meeting. It's Tuesday, March 22nd, and we're going to call this meeting to order. We'll start with the flag salute, and Stacy, if you'll lead us.
(inaudible)
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item two, adopt-- excuse me, oh. Item two, adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Got a motion in second?
Second by Steve.
Second by Steve. Any comments or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Do we have any public concern? All motion carries. It's been a long day, sorry guys. Item three, superintendent's report. This is for information only. Richard?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We have some individuals here that we are delighted to have joining us, and we'd like to start by recognizing our High Desert Bowling Team. They are the league champions and have done some amazing things, not only this year, but other years, and are supported by some tremendous adults. I'd like to invite Chris Manchreck, who is math teacher at Carson High School and also the school sponsor and advisor of the bowling team, to come forward and begin those introductions.
Hi, you guys, good evening. The success of this team, we've won fourteen out of the last fifteen years, we've won the championship, and the success of this team, I cannot attribute to myself, and mostly it is because we have kids who work hard, practice hard. We have also dedicated coaches who are certified. We have four coaches that are either bronze, silver, or gold certified coaches, and so I'd really like to introduce them and bring them up. Tonight, we have two of them here. Vern Barnes is a coach of ours, he's absent tonight, and Chris Fletcher, I think, is also absent tonight. But I'd like to introduce you to our head coach, Kevin Costa, and one of our other coaches, Dave Lethko, and have them come up. While they come up, I'm going to pass around, not all the kids are here, but this is really lightweight. It's the picture that they gave us, we actually get to put something up at Carson High School, finally. We're going to put up the picture and a plaque that they gave us this year. We used to have a really tall trophy that we couldn't really find a case to fit in, and since that trophy has been retired because our name covers all of it except for one spot, they gave it to us, and we're beginning to get a plaque that they said they could find a place to hang up with our picture. So if you'd like to pass this around, it's really light. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for inviting us again. It really is an honor to be able to teach these kids, keep the grades up. Just a little bit of history about the team. We have a grade check--
Sorry if I--
I'm sorry.
I know they announced you already, but just for the record, could you say your name?
My name's Kevin Costa. Thank you. We pride ourselves on the grades, and the association has a policy of checking the grades every three weeks to make sure everyone's eligible. We check it every week, sometimes twice a week, so we really hold the kids' feet to the fire as far as grades. If their grades aren't up, they are not eligible to compete weekly, so-- As Ms. Manchreck said, we've won it fourteen out of the last fifteen seasons, and this encompasses all of the high schools in northern Nevada. So we have three kids on our team from Douglas that go to school in Douglas. They do not have a team, so we're the next closest one, and it's really wonderful. We had eighteen kids on the team this year. So what I'd like to do is have the kids come up and introduce themselves here in just one minute. We had, I'm sorry, the awards this year. We had one player that was above and beyond, so his name is Dustin Floyd. He was the regional high average, meaning he had the whole, the highest average out of every high school. There was over 250 kids this year competing in bowling, so his average was 216. His, he had the regional high series, a 751, regional high game at 279, and for the second year in a row, he was the regional player of the year. So also, we had Chesney Miner, who was elected to the regional All-Star team, and we had Matt Liddell, who was also elected to the regional All-Star team. So the kids that are here right now, they're going to come up and just read their, their average, their high game for the season, as well as their high series. So, come on up.
I had a, I finished the year with a 188 average and a high game of a 244. We also got a plaque for Valley Division Championship of the 2015 and 2016 season. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Skylar Belcher, and my average was 199 this year, and my high game was a 267.
I have the average of the 216 with the high game of 279, and also, to add on being male Regional Player of the Year, I also won a $1,000 scholarship.
Hi, my name is Nick Fisher. I have an average of 77. My highest game was 132, and my highest series was 278.
Hi, I'm Chesney Miner. My average at the end of the year was 160. My highest game was 222, and my highest series was 561, and also, with being elected into the All-Star team, I won a $100 scholarship.
Hi, my name is Ryland Fancher. I ended the year with a 145 average, a 214 high game, and a 519 high series.
All right, so that is, you heard the scholarships. The National Bowling Stadium, the reason we don't have the championship plaque here tonight, they are now putting that in the National Bowling Stadium with all of the kids' names, so it'll be there forever, which is where it needs to be. It's really quite an honor to be in there. The scholarships, there are scholarships available for colleges. We have two past bowlers that are on scholarship to colleges, and both of those bowlers will be competing for the intercollegiate national championship on the 20th of April. So, thank you for your time.
Yeah, Kevin, thank you very much. You know, that's great. We get to hear a lot from a lot of the sports and the various organizations at the schools, and it's, you know, we haven't heard too much from bowling, and you guys are kind of like a silent gem. You guys are amazing. So keep up the good work. I think my lifetime cumulative score might be around an 85, so congratulations to all of you. Anybody have any comments for? Well, thank you again. Sorry, Richard?
I was just going to carry on with my report, Mr. President. Just two want to add my congratulations to our bowling kids. They did a great job. It was fun to follow them and watch their progress through the season. Next, I would like to ask the Carson High School instructors for HOSA to come forward, Mr. Sacalarius and Mrs. Gustafson.
Yeah, you're going to go take pictures and let me talk, figures. That's how we work. I think people say that's what makes us a good team. Superintendent Stokes, President Cassioppo, members of the board, it is my pleasure to be here tonight to report on our HOSA Future Health Professional Group from Carson High School. We had our state leadership conference last week down in Las Vegas. We went from Sunday, the 13th, through Wednesday, the 16th, where our kids competed in various health science-related events, professional symposiums where they went and learned things. It's run just like a very professional conference. If the kids are not in a competition, they are in symposiums, learning just as we would if we were going to attend one of those conferences. Our students in chapter received the following awards and recognition. In knowledge test, in trans-cultural healthcare, we took first place, that was Rosie Batista. Medical math, Gabby Escobar took fourth. Behavioral health, Jonathan Ventura, or Ojo, took first. In pathophysiology, Anna Vel de Negro took fifth. In pharmacology, Kimberly Reyes took fifth. In our healthcare issues exam, which is an exam that covers current issues in the healthcare field, that the kids really don't have a lot of time to study, but we do make all of our kids take the test. We had the following people qualify onto Nationals. Helena Ashagiri, Giovanna Wong Fortunato, Italo De Silva, and Hannah Golick, and Hannah actually had the seventh highest score in the entire state. In our teamwork events, our HOSA Bowl team took fifth. It's the first time we've ever had a team that has placed in that event, and not only that, I think it's the first time we've had a team from the north that's placed in that event. Normally, that event is dominated by the southern schools. That team is made up, was made up of Hannah Golick, Mia Brozovic, and Jason Arts. In our recognition events, our HOSA scrapbook, which is called HOSA Chapter Reflections, which is everything we do from Nationals in June up until State, and then again through Nationals. Allison Green was our historian, and she put together that scrapbook, and that scrapbook is qualified to go onto Nationals and to be shown to anybody who attends that, that, sorry, International Leadership Conference. Our Barbara James Service Award, which is given to, to members in HOSA who volunteer their time outside of their health science classes and outside of their normal duties. They take this upon themselves to volunteer in the community. We took a gold, and that was Victoria de Filippi with over 300 hours of community service in the health science-related areas. In our leadership events, Kendra Holloway took first in healthy lifestyle. In our health science event, we actually had three people place in dental science. Fifth place was Tanatita Vitong. Second place was Gia Wong Fortunato, and first was Jenna Wong Fortunato, and I can say, I think this is Jenna's third consecutive year winning that event, and Jenna's second year taking second to her sister. The gap is closing, though. The gap is really closing, I promise. In veterinary science, we took second place with Kara Bergerin. In our emergency preparedness events, in CPR, Victoria de Filippi and Megan Tingle took third. Italo De Silva and PJ White took fourth. In fire science, fifth place was Alexia Ball. Fourth place was Colin Gerald. Third place was PJ White, and second was Italo De Silva. We had two scholarship recipients. Their, HOSA only, in the state of Nevada, only gives two scholarships. Both of those scholarship recipients went to Carson High School. The HOSA scholarship went to Ojo Ventura, and the Linda Lopez Memorial Scholarship went to Jenna Wong Fortunato. We also have another state officer. This is, marks our third year in a row now having a state officer. We have our post-secondary vice president, which is Ojo, and then our chapter awards, which is, not only are we extremely proud of our students and what they accomplish individually, we also, Kelly and I, are very, very proud of our chapter awards, and to us, some of these awards are by far, in a way, more important than the individual awards our kids receive, because these are the awards that take the entire school or our entire program to win. And not only that, as we tell our students, it's great for them to win the individual awards. What matters to us is that you represent Carson High School yourself and your family, even more importantly, and that's representative of these awards more than anything else. We are the largest, officially now, again, the largest chapter in the state with 303 members. That includes all of the, the career technical academies down in Clark County. We had the second-largest membership increase of any of the chapters in the state. We increased our membership by more than 70 members over last year. We had the second-most members in attendance with 102 total, we took 196 total kids and six chaperones, so we had the largest group, or second-largest group in attendance. The first largest was from Clark County, so they live there. For the second year in a row, we received the gold award for 100% health science student membership, which means everybody that is involved in our health science program is also a member, a member of our HOSA group. We pride ourselves, again, on making sure that our kids understand that when you become a member in the health science community, part of that professionalism is being a member of whatever your professional organization is, and so we really push that with our students, and it shows with 100% membership. The best award a chapter can receive, and by far and away, I can tell you, the one that is most near and dear to me, that we won two years in a row, is the most professional chapter. Last year, the Board of Trustees for Nevada HOSA changed the award and created what they call a Chapter of the Year Award, which is now the highest award a chapter can receive in the state of Nevada. And that award is based on membership, participation of our students, volunteer hours, the professionalism that a chapter shows, not just at the, the leadership conference, but anything else throughout the year, advisor and chapter officer activity, as well as the overall impact on Nevada HOSA as a group. And I'm happy to say that, for the first time, the first-ever award, Carson HOSA received that award. And I can tell you that as a, as the advisor, that is the award that makes me the most proud of our students. That is the one that shows, they know how to do things the correct way, they hold themselves to a high standard, and they hold themselves to very, to being very professional, and that's the award that, that they know, as we tell them all the time, that's the award that's the most important to win. The other things are great for them, but that is the most important award somebody can win, because it reflects not only on them, it reflects on, on the job that Kelly and I do, but it also reflects on the kind of parents they have and how they are as people. At this time, we'd also like to thank our chaperones who went with us, along with bringing 96 students, it takes, it takes a whole other group to do that. Shawna Wilkins, our original health science instructor, comes back every year to chaperone with us. We brought Mrs. Golick, who is a history teacher at the high school, and my wife, Mrs. Sacalarius, who is an instructor at Sealerger. We are also, I just wanted to say, we're very proud of these young adults. I think they have and continue to prove our community well, and represent our community and our school very well. At this time, I'd like to invite them up individually and have them introduce themselves and briefly tell you what, what event they did or what awards they won. Thank you. You guys. So, before they go, so here, and we're not going to pass all these around, I think we're just going to pass around the scrapbook for you guys to look at really quick, so just go ahead and pass that around. The plaques that we give, the students are all wearing their medals, but also here, as we talked about, this is the Chapter of the Year Award, the one that, that we received. The other award I have here is the Participation Award, and it's a perpetual one that we get to keep the plaque in every year, that we either get gold, silver, or bronze. We just add, we just add a name plate to it, and you can see for the second year in a row that they've done this, we now have received the gold medal, and that's for 100% participation.
Hi, I'm Allison Green. I'm the chapter historian here at Carson High. I competed in the HOSA Chapter Reflections this year, and I got enough points to be qualified to go to Nationals in Nashville, Tennessee, for the International HOSA Conference. I also got this plaque for getting that, and they are passing around the scrapbook that I made. That is basically just a summary of all the work in community service and volunteering that we've done throughout the year.
Okay, before you start, sorry, let's go. Do you want to come up here and take a? We're not forcing you. I'm sorry to interrupt you. Whenever you're ready, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Hannah Golick. I got, my HOSA Bowl team got fifth at State. This is my little ribbon that I got, and I also got seventh place in the healthcare issues exam.
Hello, my name is Ojo Ventura, and I am now currently serving as the 2016, 2017, post-secondary vice president. I was previously the 2015, 2016 second vice president, and I got a little plaque for that, a little recognition. And at State, I competed at, I competed in the behavioral health knowledge test, and I placed first. And then we, I also received the Presidential Volunteer Service Award for serving as a HOSA officer, and since we had 50, plus 50 hours, we got a little pin, and we had a certificate, and a little letter from the president.
Hi, I'm Megan Tingle.
And I'm Victoria de Filippi.
And we participated in a partner event for emergency preparedness in CPR and first aid.
And out of 18 teams, we won third place, and we are going on to Nationals. I would also like to add that I got the gold recognition for the Barbara James Service Award with over 340 hours of service.
Hi, my name is Gabby Escobar, and I took the knowledge test for medical math, and I placed fourth at State, and I might go to Nationals.
Hello, I'm Rosie Batista, and I am Carson High HOSA's current treasurer. I did not go to State, but I did compete because it was an online test in trans-cultural health, and I got first, so.
Hello, my name is PJ White.
And I'm Italo De Silva.
And we competed in the CPR first aid event and placed fourth, and we competed in the fire science event, and luckily enough, he beat me.
I placed second place for fire science, and--
I got third. So, thank you.
Hello, my name is Jenna Wong Fortunato, and at this year's State Leadership Conference, I completed my term as the 2015, 2016 state first vice president, and I took first in dental science, and will be going to Nationals.
Hi, I'm Giovanna Wong Fortunato, and I competed in the dental science competition as well, and I got second place.
Thank you for allowing us to come in and present. As you can see, our kids are doing an amazing job, and it, and it's truly a reflection on them and how well they do and, and what they can do. So, thank you.
Yeah, Frank, thank you. Yeah.
So, when are Nationals?
The, it's actually--
International?
Yeah, it's now international HOSA competition. It's in Tennessee, it's June 20, I think it's 22nd through the 24th.
So you'll let us know when you're doing fundraising, so we can participate in that?
Absolutely, we will, and we will make sure as we go, when we go, hopefully, we get to take all 19 of our students. As we are there, we'll make sure we update our Carson High, Carson High HOSA Facebook page as well to help keep you posted on what we're doing. Thank you.
Frank, I just wanted to thank you. I mean, we, it's, you know, I've been fond of HOSA for a while, and I think the success of the program is obviously the students that are involved in it, and as well as you and Kelly and everybody, but the fact that you've had such tremendous growth, I mean, the awards are one thing, but the fact that we've had such tremendous growth in this is just fantastic, and it speaks, I think, volumes to what you guys are doing, so thanks for everything you do. My son enjoyed it, and my youngest now is trying to find time in her schedule to get involved a little more, and it's a fantastic program, so, you know, congratulations to everybody.
Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to announce, too, that Pioneer High School has a similar group of HOSA students, and we'll invite them to our board meeting at our next meeting. We look forward to hearing from them as well. Just to round out my announcements here, spring break will begin March 24th and carry through April 1st, and so school resumes after spring break on April the 4th, and that's my report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stokes. Now we'll move on to board reports, and it looks like the Carson High chair is empty, so we're going to start with Pioneer.
Thank you, members of the board. Yearbooks will be purchased, or can be purchased from Mr. Fulton for $25. There's a Project Discovery Ski Day at Mount Rose tomorrow, March 23rd. There will be a Rock Sport Day on Friday, February 19th, and we would like to welcome back and congratulate the PHS students who participated at the Nevada State HOSA Conference last week in Las Vegas. The students attended workshops, seminars, and career-building, leadership and development, motivation, and many others. On the competition side of the conference, the PHS students placed fifth place in public health category. A reminder that there will be no school for spring break starting this Thursday, so charge up your batteries, enjoy your time off. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. How about Nevada Association of School Boards update? No update there? We'll just move on to board announcements. Steve, Deion?
I just, I just have a couple of things from Fremont. Obviously, all the elementary schools are doing their parent-teacher conferences this week, so they're having early release, and Fremont, specifically this week, or, I'm sorry, and their pennies for patients in March, they raised $1,175 for that fundraiser. And when they return in April from spring break, they're going to have a Family Literacy Night on Wednesday, April 6th, at 5:30, and also a third quarter awards assembly on Friday, April 8th.
Thank you. Ron?
Nothing received.
Okay, Stacy?
From Mark Twain, their ice cream social is coming up April 15th, and then they're having a fundraiser, a color run, which is April 23rd at Mills Park, and it's a two-mile run, and you can, you have to register by April 8th, but I was told if you can't run the whole two miles, like me, still show up, and they'll be okay with me walking half of it. We'll see what happens, but if I'm not here at the meeting on the 26th, you'll know why. And that's my report.
Thank you. Ryan?
I don't have anything to report.
Okay, for Carson Middle School, last Friday was the Chili Bingo Night, and a lot of fun was had by all, and a lot of great prizes were won. And also, they are in the middle of gearing up for the eighth-grade interview, so if you're interested in signing up, you can contact Carson Middle School to find out how. For Fritch Elementary School, they are in the middle of parent-teacher conferences, and spring break, Read-a-Thon logs are going home, and this spring break, the PTA has opened it up to the staff, so there's a staff competition for Read-a-Thon going on as well. And today, I was able to meet Nicole, the new social worker that will be assigned to Fritch. I didn't catch her last name, because I was in the middle of Parent-Teacher Conference, but, yeah, we have one, so.
All right, and as for me, I apologize, but I do not have a report tonight. I did notice, though, that Allison's sitting in the audience, so just as the book goes around, I'm not rushing anybody, but--
She doesn't want to lose it.
We just wanted to make you aware that she is there. Steve?
You know, we might want to also mention that, you know, we offer many thanks to the Adams Hub, the other people at Spargnus, or Dr. Chen. I know many of us were able to attend another outstanding presentation, and I think, you know, hopefully, they recognize our, that we, you know, are very thankful for that opportunity to listen to him when they bring him to town.
No, thank you, Steve. I forgot to mention that. So that was, that was, that was fantastic, and Dr. Chen, if you ever get a chance to meet him and talk to him, what a, just a nice, approachable guy, really, just dead for somebody with his credentials, super guy to talk to.
I forgot, last week was the Choir Palooza, and that event is just getting bigger and bigger. Someday, they're going to have to open up both sides of the bleachers to fit everybody in, but I'd like to thank our music educators for putting that on and orchestrating that for the parents. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. How about association reports? Yes, please.
Mr. President, members of the board, Terri Cantley from Sesa. I just wanted to say, it's clearly the Ides of March, and I wanted to thank the board members. I know this is just part of the consent agenda, and you just check it off all the time, but we do have an extraordinary number of employees who are getting very sick at this time of year, and you guys just approve those sick leave bank requests wonderfully. And as a matter of fact, I think we have an opportunity for the first time to take our association's catastrophic sick leave bank for a run. We do have a member that is catastrophically sick, and so I think we're going to get that request here soon. And I don't know if this is an appropriate place to do this or not, but I never hear about Carson Montessori School, any board reports, and I know that we're kind of partners with them. They're not really part of the school, our school district, but they are. And so if I may, Carson Montessori had a fundraiser in which their goal was $6,000, and they raised $7,400, and as a result, their principal, Jessica Daniels, is now going to have to sleep on the roof for a night. So, just thought you all would like to know, Jessica used to be a member of our school district, and so I just thought it was hysterical. So anyway, thank you. That's my report.
Do the students get to choose the date? After checking AccuWeather or something?
You know, they sent out a note-- You know, they sent out a note and it said something like, "We'll get back to you on that," so I'm not sure exactly the date, but once I have that, I'm sure it's going to be when it gets a little warmer, I hope, for her sake.
Good. Thank you very much. Okay, I think that was, did I miss anybody for association reports? Brian, you're good? Okay, we'll move on to item six, public comment. Comments may be made by members of the public on any matter within the authority of this board. Please note that public comment will be taken on items marked for possible action. Before action is taken on such items, the members of the public are encouraged to comment on such items at the time they are being considered. Although members of the board may respond to questions and discuss issues raised during public comment, no action may be taken on such a matter until it is placed on the agenda for action in a meeting of the board. In making public comments, speakers are asked to come up to the podium, sign in, speak into the microphone, and identify themselves for the record. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes and to not simply repeat comments made by others. And again, this is for discussion only. And look at that, when I was looking down, somebody showed up. Mr. Grab.
Hi, Jeff Grab. I'm an implementation specialist with RTT. I work with both middle schools and Dr. Delphine's passing out a flyer to you. I'm here to inform you of an event that's happening at Carson Middle School. Unfortunately, it'll be an evening of a board meeting, but that's just the way the schedule worked out with sports and the, the big sport of the spring, the testing calendar and all that. And that event is the CMS sixth grade family steam night, which is April 26th in the Carson Middle School gym from 5:30 to 7:00. In my capacity as an implementation specialist, I also work on, I facilitate rather, the parent and community outreach solution team at Carson Middle School and we surveyed parents to find out what kind of events they'd like to see to come into the schools and they, one of the things they highlighted was more grade level events. So, we combined that with our CTE department's desire to have a steam night and made it a sixth grade night, but I want to emphasize that older and younger siblings are encouraged to come as well. It's a family night.
Is this open to current sixth grade students or incoming sixth grade students?
Sure.
Okay.
We, we do want to, we do want to try to get a count because, well, not just for the hot dogs, but, but we have a number of competitions. Mr. Billings is going to have what he calls a lunar landing competition that we need to, we need to get supplies for. The art teachers got supply needs as well, so we need a rough count. So, if anybody from outside the school would like to participate, my, my contact information is on that flyer or you can just call the school and they can give the information to me. Any other questions?
Any questions, Mr. Grab? No, thank you very much. No, go ahead. Did you just?
Again, we, we really want this to be a hands-on, fun night, but we also want to highlight those, those things that go into science, technology, engineering, math, and how they're applied through art.
Fantastic, I appreciate it. You know, the STEM nights and now the steam nights and all that are really gaining a lot of momentum and I think it's great. I mean, coming from a science background, I like to see it in the schools. I think it, I think the more we do this, the more, the more students realize there's so much to offer and that, you know, it's not just, you know, it's not just stereotypical math and science, so it's nice to see the hands-on activities because I think those really add to it. So, so thanks for, sorry we can't make it, but thank you for setting this up.
It wasn't on purpose.
No, that's true. We could come, yeah.
That's, that's the night, yes, that, that the educator of the year and the classified per, I think you need to be here.
It doesn't start till 7:00. We can grab a hot dog, see what's going on and come up here. Then my stomach won't growl during the award.
Okay. Sounds like a deal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I did have Jay Codell signed up, signed in to speak during our public comment session. There he is.
I just basically wanted to come ask for a, for next meeting, can I get the agenda item collision repair back on? That's why I came up here. I just want to ask if I can get the agenda, the collision repair class back on the agenda for next meeting.
I will, what I'll do is I'll, I'll talk to Mr. Stokes. Do we have, and I'm not trying to shut it down, I'm just curious, do you have new information to present or?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, let me, Mr. Stokes, do you, I can chat with you about it after the meeting? Okay. All right, good. Thank you, Jake. If you haven't signed in and you have anything you'd like to discuss, we're still open for public comment. If not, I'll go ahead and close public comment and we'll move on to item seven, which will be the discussion and possible action to adopt a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement to amend and restate the district's 401A special pay plan with Valek Retirement Services Company to adopt the Valek Retirement Services Company retirement plan for governmental employer document in order to comply with the Pension Protection Act of 2006, which is effective July 1, 2015. And we have Andrew Feeling and Joe McAluso. And that was a mouthful, given the fact that I've had a frog in my throat for the last, like, hour.
Good evening, trustees. AJ Feeling for the record. I have Mr. Joe McAluso here with me today from Valek. Valek is one of the companies that we offer our 403B and 457 plans to our employees. So, Joe is the direct link with many of our employees and he's also been a great friend of the district. Anytime my office has any questions regarding anything like this, regardless of the company, we call Joe because Joe knows. So, we really appreciate all that he helps us out with. And I'll, I'll let him, this is something that happens from time to time. I think probably four or five years ago, there was a restatement of the 403B plans. It's a, there was change in IRS language, so I'll let Mr. McAluso explain and I think that'll be it. Thanks.
Thank you. Again, Joe McAluso with Valek and the last time I was here, it was the same type of instance. Every so often, the IRS updates their regulations in terms of retirement plans and the district is a participant in our company's document service, so there's no charge to the district to update your retirement plan documents. And this 401A, all these different numbers, 403B, 457B, 401A, they're all just different IRS code sections. And the IRS code section 401A has been updated and so we are updating the plan document for your 401A plan. And the, and Valek does recommend that the board approve that update and Mr. Feeling would sign as the plan administrator for that update and it'll go into effect.
Great. Ron, did you have a question?
Why is this dated July 1 of 2015?
I don't know why the, we sent it to AJ, Mr. Feeling, early this year. The plan document department, they, they do deal with thousands of plans. I don't know if this was the time that your plan came up to have that document sent out. I can find out if there was any reason for a delay, but I don't know why that date is on, on the document.
AJ, is it any input on that or?
I think it was, it was something that we, I don't know if there, there may have been a miscommunication early when this actually, as of the July 1, 2015. It's something that we, we remained aware of a couple of months ago and we're going back and forth trying to figure out what, what we needed to do. Once we realized it was, it was simply a restatement, that's when we knew we could just bring it to the board to have it done.
Yeah. No, and yeah, just to be clear, the district office, fiscal services, did not receive any communication from us until early this year on this item, so.
Okay, any additional questions? All right. And, sorry, any, any additional comments from you guys? This is an action item, if somebody wants to make a motion.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees adopt the resolution to amend and restate the district's 401A special pay plan with Valek Retirement Services Company and the Valek Retirement Services Company retirement plan for governmental employer document to comply with the Pension Protection Act of 2006 effective July 1, 2015.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Any comments from the public? Not seeing any? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you very much. Move on to item eight, informational update from various focus groups comprised of adults and middle school students regarding educational experiences and opportunities in the Carson City School District. Again, this is for discussion only and Dan Sadler and Kerry Pryor.
President Cassioppo, Superintendent Stokes, members of the board, thanks for having us this evening. My name is Dan Sadler. This is Kerry Pryor. I'm the principal of Carson Middle School. For those in TV land, is it still on TV? Oh, okay. The internet, well?
It's streaming live.
Modern TV, all right. First of all, go ahead.
Can I just say hi to LeAnn Morris, who I know is watching tonight? She told me she always watches the board meeting.
That's why we were checking, yes.
We're checking to make sure it works.
And thank you to Kerry for crafting a beautiful PowerPoint presentation to go along with this. She's highlighting her technical prowess and digital tools in education, so I just wanted to point that out as well tonight. We're happy to, to come before you tonight and just kind of present an update on some information that we were asked about. It actually stems back to a meeting that we had with the Community PLC in the fall. We were both part of a focus group on learning guides and we had some good discussion about that. Kerry and I were both part of that focus group and so we're here to really kind of report out on learning guides specifically and kind of what we learned about those in our conversations, but just a couple of highlights, just to kind of bring everybody back to the conversation with the learning-centered model that we've been funded through Race to the Top for the last, we're in the third year of implementation. And in a nutshell, this is really just school improvement and it's a little bit different the way that we go about business now. The learner-centered model is really strategically designed to address four critical elements of curriculum, instruction, assessment, and leadership. The consistent and viable curriculum is probably the most important as far as what we've done with learning guides and we'll highlight that a little bit here for you this evening, but that's really the pathway for what the students are to know and when they're supposed to know that. You can see that we have effective instructional practices for all students, collaborative reflection planning and data-driven decision-making through our professional learning communities or PLCs, and systemic monitoring interventions. And that's really, again, a significant component of what we've put in place is collecting data, analyzing that data, and then taking feedback from those data sources to support student learning and to support our teachers in their instruction to support student learning. So, the stakeholders here that we've had discussions with, obviously students, parents, teachers, our community, and then leadership within the school system and schools that we have. So, we've had two focus groups in particular that pertain to the learning guides with a group of teachers and the group of teachers was about 50/50 from Carson Middle School and Eagle Valley Middle School. Kerry facilitated, I took notes. And then we sent some follow-up with those teachers to get some more feedback, presented the information that they presented to us. The student focus groups, Kerry could talk a little bit about what it looked like at Eagle Valley Middle School, but at Carson Middle School, we've had a grade-level student focus group, so we have a sixth grade, a seventh grade, an eighth grade student focus group, and we've really brought them into the conversation about our school vision and our beliefs as well, so we've kind of extended it, but we also highlighted how they use student learning guides and we'll share that information with you here tonight. And then both schools have also created a parent focus group. That's kind of a new one for us. We had our, our first meeting of Mighty Three Parents last, last week, actually, and we'll continue to build that conversation moving forward as well. And I know there's, there's also a parent focus group at Eagle Valley Middle School.
So, as Dan mentioned, we collected data from our focus groups of teachers and it was a group of 14 teachers, one from each discipline at the two middle schools, as well as a counselor from each of the middle schools. The other group that we collected data from is that we know, because it's part of the strategic plan, that we want to attract and retain exceptional teachers. Another focus group that we collected data from was our new hires, because as we bring them into our system, we want to make sure that they find value added in our system and that they're clear on the indoctrination process into Carson City School District. And I just wanted to take time now to thank you for approving the calendar because from the data we collected from new hires throughout the year, we now will be having five days of new hire because we know our system is one in which we want to make sure they're successful from day one. So, I appreciate that and thank you as the coordinator of new hires. The other part of the strategic plan that we really take a look at when we think about Race to the Top and its initiatives is that we want to have that curriculum that matters. And so, the first piece that we did was that we brought teacher teams together to create that consistent and viable curriculum. Teachers are the heart of the Race to the Top initiative. They did the work. They are the content experts. The implementation specialists facilitated those teams under the guidance of the district leadership. Two of the pieces that the teacher teams had to develop are, one, the learning target and there's the definition of what a learning target is, and the other is the learning guide. The vision of the learning guide was to be used as a communication tool to all stakeholders, students and parents. The learning guide is really the first point into the unit. The intent of the learning guide was to set the unit, the information that the students would be engaging in, in that unit. Also included in that, as you can read from the definition, are the essential questions and how those students would exhibit or show that they had mastered the content. So, what Dan and I did was we asked the teachers, the focus group, these two questions about And on the left-hand side are two direct quotes from that meaning. One is that we're finding that teachers are streamlining their instructional practices much more efficiently, that it's all around these learning targets. Some veteran teachers who are already exceptional learner-centered teachers were already doing this. They then supported their colleagues in becoming more learning-focused. The other quote is that students are more aware of what's being taught. These learning targets are posted on the learning guides, they're posted around the classrooms, and they're continuously communicated to the students throughout the units. We did a little videoing and I want to personally thank the entire IT department for their support today. Janice and her team.
Maybe you thanked her too early.
Yep, you thanked me too early.
Janice, you promised to make me look good today.
It's a video. The voice isn't coming out.
Now, you have to do what we practiced, Janice, where I say "what" just in the video.
Yep, say "what's in the video."
We really have no sound? Uh-oh.
Yeah, it's all the way up. Oh, wait a minute. Dumb Janice. Nope. It's not it.
Okay. Do you want me to go on? Oh, there it is. Do you want to rewind and I'll set it up a little? Okay, so just to set the video, when we go into classrooms to make observations as well as in these student focus groups and Mr. well as in these student focus groups, and Mr. Sadler has captured some video as well, this is a clip in an actual sixth-grade social studies classroom. We asked the students about the learning guides and their engagement with the learning guides. We asked the students about what they're learning and how they know that they're learning it. So these two students are sixth-grade students at Eagle Valley and I've asked them about the learning guide and the use of it.
Learning guide?
Yes.
When we get it in the first corner that we're going to be learning, so like you ask us questions, like we can answer one, two, three, or four if we know it, don't know it, and then as we get more and more knowledge for it, we can answer like better, like threes, uh, we know it and can help others learn.
Want to add anything, Kerry?
Yeah, one is the laws, like I knew I had to, is I could do it with help, three is I got it, four is I can help others.
So sorry about the volume on that, but basically what the students were sharing with you is how they are self-assessing on the learning guide as well. So basically what we did was we looked for themes and one of the themes that stood out in the focus groups of the teachers was that the teachers are acknowledging that they're still discovering how to best use these learning guides. One of the things that they're acknowledging is that very bottom part of the quote, "If implemented more frequently, the students can be developing their skills of metacognition." And we're really looking at metacognition, as you know, it's part of the Nevada Educator Performance Framework, otherwise known as NEPF, and how teachers are activating students to be more metacognitive and it's one of those soft skills. So I think we'll see more of that as we move forward with learning guides. And just two last quotes on learning guides. As you know, because you are very informed about the district initiatives as well as our goals with parents, and we want parents and guardians to be engaged and it's one of our goals, and Mr. Sadler and I will talk about this in next steps, but that also appeared as a common theme, how to get these learning guides in the hands of parents, because they really are the key to our partnership as well. And so you can see from the quote that there's some concern about Sharp School and parents not accessing Sharp School, and so we really want to look at that and how we are going to support parents in getting these learning guides out to them. So two last definitions and things that we ask questions around in these focus groups. One is, as you're aware of, these teacher focus groups or these teacher learning teams created district benchmarks as part of the measured instructional unit called the MIU, and these were post-assessments that every student would take. These post-assessments then were housed on Mastery Connect, which is our cloud-based software platform, and I'm sure that you are hearing lots about Mastery Connect and how we're using that to track student mastery. So Janice, I'm really hoping that my friend has sound. Because this was the video of the day. There you go.
And you're using Mastery Connect. How does that support you as a learner?
Because when, like, you're done with it, it has different colors. Red is like when you don't know anything, yellow is when you kind of know it, not that much, and green, like you're mastering it. And when I have a red, I know what I need to work on, and if I have a yellow, I have to work on it a little, and when, on some questions, I don't have to work on it a lot because I know them.
So basically what she was sharing with you, and if you haven't had a chance to visit the schools that are fully using Mastery Connect, please do so and sit alongside a student or a teacher as they are on Mastery Connect. And basically, the colors that she was sharing with you are indications of interventions, mastery, remediation, extension that are needed. So we asked the teachers questions about Mastery Connect and the use and how it might have changed their assessment practices. One of the themes that came out was that teachers are really seeing how this tool might be used in the classroom as a formative assessment tool so that they can track their students' growth. The other theme that came out, it's the same with any technology. If teachers are comfortable with the technology, they're going to use it more often. If they're not, then we need to figure out how to support them in using that technology. Here, you want me to click?
You're doing good with click.
Okay, I'll be the clicker.
Just to highlight a couple of things, because this was a new system when we first started talking about this and it was also one we'd referred to, you know, we were building this as we were flying it, and so it really highlights, we were, and we continue to manage that complex change, and it's through the development of our staff that we've really been able to move in a positive direction with this. And ultimately, it's incredibly important as a building leader and anybody who's in a leadership position in our schools to build the capacity of the teachers that we work with and to support them so that we're moving student achievement forward. So in order to do that, we've obviously needed a vision for what we're working towards, the skills that we need to develop along the way. Incentives is one that we'll talk a little bit about still because we still have some questions about that. Resources and an action plan. So we've kind of seen all of these stages of managing complex change through the implementation. At times, you know, we've had frustrations because we were lacking some of these and we've really relied on each other as leaders and educators to develop things that we didn't have a resource to go to because it didn't really exist. This was something that we've really been innovative in and creating. So managing that complex change from a leadership standpoint has been a critical component. I know there's some questions about, well, what's the buy-in factor? And it's really not so much about buy-in. And we, at the beginning of this, were asking teachers to, if we can use a metaphor here, to build a new type of car with some tools that they have and then learn how to drive on the wrong side of the road. So for people who'd been doing things successfully for years, that was a challenge. I think as Kerry highlighted, when we've had new teachers come in from outside of the district, whether they were new to education or just new to our district, it's really been kind of like built-in navigation system for them. It's really been something good, like, hey, this really makes sense, this provides a lot of direction. So the managing the change process is something that we continue to dialogue about and we're consistently trying to improve our processes so that ultimately we see an improvement in student achievement. And I would say that on the buy-in, it's really coming a lot on the backside as well because we've seen our student achievement improve, and there's lots of different reasons for that. Obviously, the things that we've put in place with curriculum assessment, time to discuss it, the professional dialogue that we have, we've looked at grading practices and what really goes into how we communicate learning and how we communicate that with the students so that they understand those expectations. So again, back to the learning guide, that's really driven that conversation. It doesn't mean that that learning guide's always front and center with a piece of paper as they're learning and they're just reading from it, but it is something that has become part of our culture of learning and something that we are constantly drawing from, taking bits and pieces from the learning guide and bringing students back to it in different ways to self-assess. And that, the use of data and feedback in learning has increased exponentially amongst our teachers and students. As I highlighted, we really want to focus on developing the capacity of our teachers and that's something, they've put a lot of time and effort into this, and I think we have to be cautious that we don't just continue to... Well, I guess it's really about that incentive piece with the managing complex change when we go back, that we don't really have a way to incentivize the teachers in it other than their improved outcomes with students, which is fantastic, but when we're considering that we've really revamped the whole system here, it's something that we're still continuing to have questions about how we incentivize the teachers so that they feel successful with the work that they've put into it and moving forward. Anything to add on that?
So one thing I was sharing with Mr. Sadler as we planned this is that I was on the district website reviewing what our district goal number five is, and that it's to attract and retain preeminent faculty by supporting innovation, creativity, and performance. And I think we still agree with that, right? And we think about that, it's the teachers that are leading and that are the foremost and the best, and that's what we want for our students. And that's why this quote really struck me and why we put it in the PowerPoint. We know that the number-one factor for student achievement is the teacher in the classroom, and we cannot allow the teachers to feel at all demoralized by the initiatives that we are putting forth, and I firmly and strongly and passionately agree with that. And so what we want is for our teachers to be high in efficacy. And this is one of those soft skills, and if you had a chance to go to Milton Chen's presentation, he refers to this. He refers to people being efficacious and what that means, because if you're high in efficacy, you approached goals, tasks, and challenges in a different way. The elementary schools are studying growth mindset versus fixed mindset, and this is a growth mindset skill. As adults, we want to be efficacious, and so we're really studying how we can support teachers because they have the tools in place and now we need to support our teachers in being innovative, using their creativity so that they can increase their performance and so that we will impact student achievement and continue to do those positive things that we have set out to do. The research on why efficacy matters. And our next steps.
So something that's been a highlight for us with revisiting that vision and action plan is obviously sustainability, but also the way we communicate that vision and what it is that we're doing here. We still have a lot of questions from time to time, particularly with parents, you know, what is it that my students are learning, and trying to connect to those learning guides, trying to connect to parents in general is something that we have questions about as we move forward, but it's going to be a critical step for sustainability. And making sure that the vision is really the lens that we put all decisions through, that's something that we've really been working on as a site, and I know that they're having conversations at Eagle Valley as well, but even just within the vision for what we've put in place here as a learning model so that we're making good database decisions that are going to help support student learning. Coordinating the resources, we have a lot of things that we talk about now. You hear educators, like we have the NEPF, which is our new evaluation system. We now have the Nevada Ready 21 where we'll be fully supporting the one-to-one learning at the middle schools. We're happy to have that coming onboard, obviously with Race to the Top District, what we've been doing, the work there, and we're starting to see that those resources are working hand in hand. Like if we were to go through the NEPF right now, you would see that a lot of the instructional standards that we're supporting teachers on connect with the work that we've done. There's so many things that we can say, boy, we're in really good shape as a district. We've done a lot of the work here and we're having some success with it already. Going back to being efficacious with teachers, we've had laptops at the middle school for a couple of years now, but the conversation's going to change a little bit moving forward and what those expectations are and how we utilize technology as a learning tool in the classroom, so we need to make sure that that aligns, that the resources that we're bringing onboard align with what we're doing. And then obviously the continuation of what we've been doing through Race to the Top is an important part of that sustainability. And then continuing the progress monitoring and making adjustments. Again, as we have gone through this process, there's been several things we've tried that didn't work so well. I remember a tool we used called Apperson that became a really dirty word, kind of an inside joke amongst educators now, but we've had some things that we've tried that didn't work and we've gone back to the drawing board and had conversations about how we can improve things. And so highlighting this continuous progress monitoring of what we're doing, not only from our systems standpoint, but also in the classroom. Teachers are looking at how things, like how do I know if my students learn this and how am I going to make adjustments if they didn't and how am I going to make adjustments if they did learn it? So that continuous progress monitoring and making adjustments and then advocating for all of our people that work for us. So this is a fantastic school district and we really do have some innovation going on right now. We want to encourage that, support teachers to take risks in their classrooms, support students to take risks in their learning and to see what we can come up with on the backside of it.
So to close, many of you that were at Milton Chen, he started his presentation with, "How would you define a great school?" And he said, the way in which he had heard someone else define a great school is by this, that we want students, staff, and parents to be beating down the doors to get in as fast as they may want to leave, but really, truly, we don't want them to leave our schools. We want them to race to get in and be really slow on the exit. Any questions?
Ron, go ahead.
Yeah, real quickly, well, thank you for taking the time. It sounds like you started this out with teachers, students, okay, parents, but the feedback you got from the 14 teachers were all, I take it, positive. Now, we're talking about the learning guides and the learning targets, and the feedback was, this is good. And I can just share with you in talking to a couple of students at the high school, and I talked about the learning guides and I says, "Give me your assessment." You know, you as a student and then going forward in life. These two students both said, "When the teachers, as you're emphasizing, were excited about the learning guides, it got them excited about the subject matter." And they said, "Still, some teachers were not all that excited and they didn't, they kind of set them aside." But I think what you, from these, you know, a couple of students, it's a powerful tool, tool not only for the subject matter, but for how they approach life, asking essential questions and, you know, their learning targets, but they do it that pretty soon it's just a way of life. They do it when they leave. It's not like getting, when we went to school or to college, you get a syllabus at the beginning of the semester and, you know, do whatever what you want. This became a working tool for them based upon the level of the teacher excitement. So with your focus group, was there any of the teachers that weren't excited about this?
Yeah, I think I would refer back to when I was highlighting, like when we're managing that complex change, that not everybody's in the same place at the same time, and it also depends on what point they are in their learning. So I know a lot of teachers at Carson Middle School, for example, constantly refer back to the learning guide, but the expectation is on the student to make sure that they have that learning guide with them, you know, and so it's not something that they're, again, constantly calling out, "Get it on your desk, I want to see it." So I think a lot of it depends on how much they're used on a regular basis. I mean, the expectation's very clear and as we've talked to our teachers, it's been valuable tool for them in the classroom to have those conversations. As far as the student feedback as well, I think that that supported the students, all that I spoke with in our focus groups were, said that they were very valuable, but there was a few gaps perhaps in teachers, well, not all of the teachers are consistent in their use, so that's something that I think we want to improve on.
Okay, but that goes back to your next steps, the sustainability, the monitoring of the progress. Now, how do you intend to do this? Because it's, what you've done is valuable to this point, and we'll talk some more with Steve or Dr. Paderro when he comes up here, but you're at the ground level, you're stating the teachers did all the work, putting this thing together, learning targets, learning guides, and, but you're the leaders. How do you intend to continue the monitor of the progress? Do you have a schedule? I mean, what, how does this work?
So one thing that we do, and I did want to address your question about the learning guides, the learning guides are a tool, just like technology is a tool, and it really depends on the teacher's comfort level and confidence with that. The teachers in the focus group, and I think that's one thing we do need to talk about, is they've requested some individuality in using the learning guides. Some teachers put the learning guides into a document online and the students can access it through Google Docs. Some teachers still use the paper version, as you can hear from those sixth graders, that teacher hasn't put it in a sleeve and put it in their binders. And so it's the tool that they're comfortable with and how they've planned to integrate that into their instruction. And so the way in which we monitor that is, we do have scheduled walkthroughs and observations that happen. Each IS is tied to a content area and tied to an administrator, and we schedule walkthroughs. And as part of our walkthroughs, we do talk to students. We ask them questions about the learning guides. We ask them questions about what they're learning. And so we'll continue to monitor that at the middle schools. And the other piece to your question, Mr. Sorzik, is Dan and I can only present from the focus of the middle schools, because I've been at the middle schools for six years. Dan's been there now seven years. And so we can only address that area.
Can I add a comment to that?
Just one thing, but with the learning guides, okay, what you said, what you got from the focus groups, that the teachers would like to modify their, based upon their particular style. This is where you're talking about the creativity of that particular teacher. And as long as it's in line with the learning targets, then is there any, is that happening? I mean, is it, we don't, it's nothing is static, that part?
As far as, are they implementing the learning, what, I didn't understand, what's happening?
The learning guide and creating the learning guide, it sounded like from the focus groups, the teachers wanted to change those and modify those to their own particular style of teaching. Is there a problem with it?
No, absolutely not. Actually, the learning guide, it does just that. It guides learning. So I think that individual classrooms, that's something, we don't expect that everybody's teaching the exact same lesson, the exact same way, on the exact same day. There is a lot of flexibility built within that, but it's really based around those learning targets. And I think that's also why teachers use them differently, because it may not be important to have the entire document up front, but I've taken that learning target off of the learning guide, and it's on the board, and that's what the conversation I'm having with my students today. Or perhaps today's the self-assessment day, so I don't necessarily have that document in front of me, but I have my laptop device, and we're doing a self-assessment using a digital tool. So I think that there's a lot of flexibility within how it's used, and certainly flexibility and creativity in how we use it.
Just one closing comment. You know, and Carrie, you know, I agree with you. We want to keep these teachers, the best and the brightest and the most creative. We want them here, and what you're expressing, the focus group, this may be a tool to do just that.
I would just like to say yes, and I thank you for meeting with me as well, but I've seen the middle school staff, I'm the only IS that still is in the IS position from the SIG grant, so I've seen two grants to completion. I care very deeply about the staffs at Carson Middle School and Eagle Valley, as does the district. They are very near and dear to me because of the time and energy that they've put into this, in these initiatives. But the other piece that we have to remember is that we've had another initiative, and we're going to have the Nevada Ready 21. And so when we think about our district goal as learning beyond the classroom, when we originally envisioned these learning guides, yes, they were a piece of paper, right? When they began planning them. But now we have to think about, and we're working hand-in-glove with the technology folks, and I rely on LeAnn Morris and her team greatly to say, how can we take these learning tools and use technology as this tool? And so we are meeting, and that's the next piece, right? Because one of the things that we always consider is the resources, and we need to prioritize the resources for our teachers and the professional development that we have planned for them. And so next year, we'll be really looking at these pieces along with technology and how we can move them into a more efficient way for our students, especially our parents and our teachers.
Let me direct one thing to Mr. Soaks. You said you did it at the middle schools, but not at the high school. Can we do something, somewhere, based upon what they've done at the high school with the focus groups? Just to get that feedback.
Yeah, absolutely. But I think that, and maybe I misunderstood your question, but we are taking this concept and providing learning guides and learning targets at the high school level. And I know that that's a source of a lot of discussion. My own student that's in high school has learning guides available to him, and that's an aspect of this work that I think we want to continue to talk about and continue to give teachers an opportunity to grow and maybe even work to the level and to the skillset that maybe has already been established at the middle school level. So, and I think that's part of where they are right now is partially due to the fact that there was that school improvement grant that has kind of jump-started that part of the work there. And so we're continuing, though, to encourage and to stress that aspect of this job, just because it is so critical to making sure that that curriculum is established and as strong as it can be.
Okay, let me just rethink this, though, and I agree with what you said, but could we have similar focus groups to get the feedback right now from the high school teachers? Like they've got feedback for next steps, and now they're already modifying, you know, what's going on to assure the teachers that we appreciate them, number one, but they're doing it in a way that allows their creativity. Can we get that same feedback as they're going that way at the high school? And maybe report back to the board at some time?
Sure, absolutely.
Any other questions?
Can you tell me this, what were the groups? Like, do you have names for the groups, or what were they? I think you already covered it, but unless, I'm way off here, but it felt like this was more an explanation of Race to the Top than the actual focus groups and what came out of them. So if I missed it, can you just tell me, like, what specific groups there were?
Sure. We met with a teacher focus group that was made up of 14 individuals, two from each of the disciplines at each of the middle schools. And then I've collected new hire data from a survey. That was one of the focus groups, because we wanted to see what their experience was entering our system now that it's been built. And then the other is the student focus groups. Mr. Sadler hosts lunch once a month with the...
Yeah, there's 15 students in each, yeah, 15 students in each grade level at Carson Middle School, so 15, 6, 7, 8 graders.
And then I have visited students in, we have three intervention classrooms, and so I chose one of the intervention classrooms to interview some students to see how students that are in need of extra scaffolding and support perceive our system and the support that they receive.
I think, Ryan, also, there was a parent focus group. We're still working on getting more parents to attend the focus group.
Yes, and Dr. Moulden and Mr. Conley host a parent-student focus group once a month at Eagle Valley, and so they would also be contributing data to the student focus groups as we continue to report out on them.
I think if I can, if we do this presentation again, I'd prefer sticking to the, I think we're all familiar with learning guides and learning targets at this point. We should be, if not, we're not doing our job up here. But I want to say, the JAC committee that we sent the survey out, we'll be presenting in the next meeting, and I think you'll find that communication is the biggest problem, it seems to be, from all levels, and our people feel like they're not being heard. And I'd imagine that your focus groups have said that just as well. And so even though they came together to create these learning guides, for some reason, they don't feel like their issues are being heard, so...
Can I speak to that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Green, so I think one of the themes that, and it's why I included this slide, because I think that is a theme, right? They feel like there's a loss of confidence, and they weren't able to do their job, or that they weren't doing their job to the best of their ability when these initiatives came down. And part of the way in which we wanted to build that confidence, and perhaps that wasn't the best way, but now we're looking at it, is that every middle school teacher, if you taught 7th grade social studies, you were subbed out, and you came together to create that, and perhaps it wasn't communicated enough. You're the content experts. You're the content experts. You're the content experts. And that's why we asked them to do that work, because we certainly did not want to demoralize them, because we want them to feel efficacious so that they can do it to the best of their ability. So I do acknowledge that. I'm sure that there are some comments about that, and that goes back to this. We need to make sure that we're communicating the vision and making sure that every decision we make is prioritized based on that vision.
And I would add to that, really, the focus on this was for learning guides at a request, and that's what we were presented to come up with. But to go in line with the conversation with your comments and also with managing complex changes, when you look at our school improvement plans, you'll see a third component that we're not highlighting here, which is school culture, and that's something we've made significant gains in over the last couple of years. I can tell you that this semester, we revamped the school vision at Carson Middle School and created belief statements solely based on teacher feedback. And then we're, part of our, the continuation of our focus groups is including parents in that conversation. Again, we had our first meeting last week, and including students as well. And that'll be something that we can constantly monitor, not just stamp it on a wall, but something that we're constantly using in our conversations with all stakeholders.
Yeah, we used your format in the JAC committee.
All right. How'd it work?
If that's a kudos or consolation to you, I am aware of that, and I say good job to that, because, well, we've been working with Shalise, but I think you guys are in tune. I think the high school right now, if somehow we can pass your communication on to them, because from what I understand, the middle schools were in this flux that the high schools filled, they were in a few years back.
We were there three years ago.
Yeah. And so, but just like we're talking about, we're making the same mistakes again right in a row. That doesn't make sense. I'm not holding you guys accountable for this, but I think this is important. This didn't, this information obviously didn't get moved forward.
No, I would agree, but I would also add to that, that it's, some of those mistakes we made, we learned from, and had we not made the mistakes, I don't know that we would have had the same direction moving forward. So part of it was stepping in the holes that we created to be able to go back and build a better hole.
The other piece that I think that maybe gets lost, and I always try to bring us back to, is that education is a social science, and you can never remove relationship from the task. Because I've never met a group of teachers that has a greater relationship with the content they teach than a group of passionate secondary teachers. And so when you bring them together to do work, you have to be cognizant of the relationship that they have with the content and the relationship that they have with each other. Because these were veteran staffs when we started six years ago. And yes, there's been great turnover, and we have new people coming on, but we have to keep that in mind, that it's a social science, and it's not a pure science. So every theorist in America can say how it should be done, but until you study relationship with task, you won't improve. And so I think that's where we are with these focus groups.
Go ahead, Dionne.
So I'll be a little focus group of one. You know, I've had a student before learning guides, and I have a student after learning guides. And as a parent, I know more about what he is expected to know and how he's expected to show that now. And so, but I think sometimes the activity of having people go through the process of thinking about that and how we want that to be, and actually put it down when you want to just say, well, I've been doing this for, you know, 20 years, and why do I have to put it down this way? But it is very, and it is very clear to me, and I've looked at hundreds of, I mean, I've looked at probably almost all the learning guides that are on the internet, and I've seen in my own child's education that when I know, when I look at a learning guide and I can, and I know that what he's doing, sometimes I look at the learning guides and I still don't know. So then I have a meeting with a teacher, and I say, I'm trying to understand, what are you guys doing? Because usually I'm trying to figure out how to adjust it. But, you know, what are you guys doing every day? Because I don't, I can't get it from this. And so as a parent and as somebody that is probably a little bit more savvy, if I'm having trouble, the kid is having, the students are having trouble. So there's, you know, kind of the recognition that not all learning guides are created equal, and some are harder to put down than others. I mean, math is very easy. You have the 9.14 parabolas, or, you know, for algebra, you know, and you know, okay, yeah, I saw that in Mastery Connect. It matches what I see on the learning guide. I know what they're doing. I know what they're supposed to be doing, what he's supposed to be doing for homework. So I think, like, some of that is useful, and I know that we have difficulty with getting parents to access that information, but in my mind, the information is there. And, you know, it's on me as the mom, as the dad, you know? And I know we need to do better in communicating with people, but I think we have those tools. And so it's just really kind of getting everybody kind of on the same page with those tools. But I think that, you know, these little steps, it's, you know, parents have to be reeducated, students have to be reeducated, and they are useful tools, they are. I mean, I like to know what's going on every day in the classroom, and if I look at those learning guides and I compare it to Mastery Connect or Power School or whatever, I can figure out what the day is like. And I just think communicating that and communicating the importance of that as a transparency tool is really what is maybe the missing little piece of it all.
Thank you for sharing that.
Did you have something? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll just make a comment. I just wanted to thank you for updating this. And just as a parent with the learning guides, and I know this kind of focused a little, we kind of clung on to the learning guides, but I think this was broader than that, and I think that was an example that you gave of it. So I think it's, what are the educational experiences that the kids are having? And one thing that I can point out with the learning guides is, I think you have parents who, you know, we, a couple of years ago, they had to learn how to register their students online, and that was a big push. A lot of parents don't have that access all the time. I think they're really savvy right now, most of them, with Power School, and next year we're changing to Infinite Campus. Perhaps what we could do is link somehow to find those learning guides to the Infinite Campus, because as a parent, I have five. I don't go to every learning guide. I'm like, where are your grades? What are you missing? Okay, you're doing good. I trust what they're doing at school, if the kids are learning it, and having grades that show that. But it would, it'd be a little easier if it was somewhere where I'm already used to looking, and I think that would probably be for most parents, kind of consolidate, because I feel like sometimes we have Edmodo, Power School, sign up here, and you have so many passwords, you get a little bit overwhelmed with all of that. So I have found learning guides in backpacks when I've looked, crumpled up. I've seen them occasionally, so I know they're out there, and I just think it's, you know, it's just something of how, and if we, when we have those back-to-school nights and the teachers presented those, when there were the parents in the classroom that way, I thought that was really helpful as well.
Thank you for sharing that. And I think it highlights that we have multiple systems, and we want them all to work together. So much like we highlighted even in this presentation, we have multiple systems for our parents, and we're continually learning and trying new things, and sometimes we really need to think about how we approach that with our parents and our communication. So, thank you.
So just back to your focus groups, you know, what Trusty Green was getting at and what I've heard a little bit, and we hear it all the times. In general, most teachers, most faculty, they're trying to wrap their heads around this, and like you said, people are in different places. But are the focus groups set in size, or if a teacher or three teachers decide, I really want to be a part of this focus group, is it limited to two per department, or is it flexible in size?
We made a conscious choice to limit it this time, but it definitely can be expanded. Part of the reason we made that conscious choice is that our teachers tend to be surveyed out. They get a lot of surveys, and at this particular time, they were getting a GATE survey, they had gotten two technology surveys because of the Nevada Ready 21 grant, they had gotten the school culture survey, and so we wanted to meet with them personally. The second time, they were sent the actual focus group questions out, and they provided feedback. I think any teacher, if you walk the halls, especially at both of our middle schools, they're giving us constant feedback on it, and so we definitely want to keep that. As the next step, as we said, we think that the middle school is in a great place for refinement and for really that piece now that's in our strategic plan, innovation, creativity, and performance. And I think that's how I'm moving forward next year, Mr. Sadler. How about you?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just...
I'm sold.
He's sold, okay.
I, sorry, I appreciate that, you know, and my thought, I'll leave it to how you guys do, but I think if you have a teacher, and I'm sure you do, if they're passionate about, hey, I really want to be a part of this, and for whatever reason, I, you know, I'm not number two getting in there, I think if we at least can offer, hey, we're, you know, we're happy to bring on a few more people, or, of course, our door's always open, our email's always open, and getting that input, we reduce... getting that input, we reduce the angst of some of these folks and saying, you know, boy, I'm not being heard. You know, there is that avenue for them. I mean, some people like to be a part of these kinds of groups, others don't, and I get that. But I mean, just having it, I've been involved in enough group committee type stuff to know that they can get overwhelming as well. So you do want to cap it, but having a little bit of flexibility, I think, might help for some of those teachers that maybe, you know, are concerned about that.
And on that note, we're also expanding the student voice. We started with 15, we're moving forward to add more. And then we started with three parents, we're certainly hoping to increase those numbers as well.
Yeah, I'm guessing the parent one, you've got room.
Yeah.
And one thing, just to address Mr. Green again, is that we do have the raw data from the teacher focus groups. So perhaps next time, that's something you would rather see, is that, I just didn't want to give you pages upon pages, but you're nodding your head. And that is certainly something that if requested, we'd be happy to provide that raw data so that you could read the notes from the meeting as well as the written. You're all nodding. I'm thinking that's going to be something that we'll be providing. And we'll encourage the high school when they have their focus groups to include that as well. So thank you for that feedback about our presentation.
What we had for this was just the agenda topic and a little snippet that didn't really explain anything. So we didn't need review, is all I'm saying.
Okay.
Please, just hit us with the point.
No, Carrie, yeah, I think you did exactly what you, you know, the instruction. And Ryan, you weren't there at the community PLC when this was brought up. And this is what, Richard, this is the reason for having these community PLCs, is to get the feedback. What we've got in this learner center model with the learning targets, the learning guides, we've got something very powerful that we have to sustain and we have to keep it going. But what Carrie and Dan did was to start the discussion, does it make sense and is it good for the kids? Because the end of the day is student achievement and success. And we're, I think what you did, you zeroed right in, and I hope you just now keep it going. Because what you started, and it could be expanded, will be expanded to the high school, but on a continual basis, that we don't let this, or we don't get complacent and say, well, this is it. Keep the teachers excited about them making the changes to make this better for the kids. So, thank you for what you've done.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to thank you guys for coming up as well. I think we, if we vetted all the questions, but thank you very much. I mean, this whole thing is work in progress and it's always going to be work in progress. And I think, you know, having that discussion of, we need more information, we have enough, we're doing this, we should be doing that, is all good conversation and we need to have it so that we can keep refining it. So thanks for presenting that to us. I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to item nine, informational update on the Students Attendance Review Board, SARB. This is for discussion only, and Dr. Medina.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. Yeah, thank you for having me this evening. Carrie, you got the clip? Yeah. So tonight, I'm giving you an update on the Student Attendance Review Advisory Board. I'm going to give you, kind of update you on the work that we've done to date, but also give you some kind of foreshadowing of what's expected, what's kind of on the horizon. So the past couple of months, we've been seeking input from everybody that we possibly can, that has their hand in attendance and truancy. We've met with all of our district administrators, we've met with folks from the Ron Wood Center, we met with folks from juvenile justice, with the district attorney's office, our SROs, truant officers. We've attended meetings in Washoe and in Douglas County to kind of see what's going on out there with attendance and truancy, get to the bottom of kind of what the best practices are, what the NRS allows and doesn't allow. And so tonight, I'm going to start off, I'm going to, at the next board meeting, we'll be bringing forth kind of our attendance policy, what we're proposing for you all to approve to be our attendance policy. But to get there tonight, I want to go through some of the NRS. Because when you look at what we're proposing, the first thing you're going to do is kind of scratch your head and wonder, what in the world was Ricky thinking when he put this together? Because it looks like something that I went out and got really creative and put together that doesn't really make any sense. But the NRS in this area, it's really circular. I mean, you'll read one NRS that says this, then it'll reference another NRS that says the complete opposite. So we kind of sat down with the district attorney, with the assistant district attorney, went through all of this NRS. The first big one that's going to impact what we bring forward is this board has to kind of approve a minimum attendance requirement. So throughout the state of Nevada, nationwide, the common practice is to set this at 90%. So this is what Washoe County uses, it's what Douglas County uses. For our state accountability reports, that's what the state kind of uses as kind of their de facto minimum attendance rule. But this board will have to kind of codify that and make that ours. The second, the piece that kind of sometimes doesn't make sense to people, in NRS, there's, parents are allowed to excuse their kid for 10 days per school year, pretty much for whatever reason, as long as they, the parent excuses it within three days and the student does the makeup work. So this means that if I wanted to pull my kid out of school for 10 days so that we could stand across the street from the school and make faces at the teachers and students when they go by, the school would have to excuse those 10 absences. And these 10 absences can't count towards that 90 days of minimum attendance requirement. So these are kind of just free absences.
90%?
Yeah, towards the 90%. Yeah, so, and you're going to see these, and what we put forward, we refer to these as circumstance absences. There's other NRS that pertains to medical absences. So this is one where it says that the board is allowed to put together a policy that says that medical absences are exempt. It says that you may do that. But then there's other NRS that pretty much says that if you don't do that, they're going to be exempted anyways. So for medical absences, as long as they're excused by the parent and the student makes up the work, they have an unlimited number of days that they're allowed to be absent for medical reasons.
My understanding was that it didn't count towards the 10 days if it was a medical, if you had a doctor's note.
So, yeah, doctor's note, we could ask for a doctor's note, but if the parent says, I don't need a doctor's note, or I'm vouching that my kid's sick, or physically or mentally incapable going to school, the NRS says, we shall accept that. The thing for both of these is that the makeup work has to be completed. If the makeup work isn't completed, we could change those absences to a third category, which are called domestic absences. So if the student has more than the number of circumstance absences, so if they get beyond this 10 days, those count as, what are we called, domestic absences? And if you get a certain number of domestic absences, you don't get your credit or you could be retained. So the way that this looks for middle and high school students, so they're set up, instead of doing the whole school year, they go by, their classes go by semesters. So all these numbers are cut in half. So in a 90-day semester, if the student's bringing a note saying that they're sick, they kind of get unlimited medical absences. If they're bringing a note for other reasons, they get five circumstance absences. Anything after those five circumstance absences are domestic absences. If you get 10 of those, it may result in you not earning your credit or not being promoted to the next grade. Any questions about that? Because that's a mouthful.
So when they hit 15 absences of circumstensive and domestic, does that mean that then they're in risk of not earning it?
Correct. Once they hit 10 domestic absences.
If they're at 14, they're okay?
Yes.
And then they can have as many unlimited medical?
Correct.
Okay.
And Ricky, I'm assuming the, when I read through this, you know, the word may is in there a lot. So there's some discretionary, you know, I'm assuming if a student is high achieving, but for some reason in a semester, they're out for various reasons, they might get a little more latitude than say a kid who's really struggling just to get by? Or how are we, how are we differentiating between?
So they're allowed administrative review, so it'd have to go through the school principal. They would have to appeal those absences. And in that case, they might be able to document, you know, after the fact that they were sick or that they had doctor's excuses that just weren't turned in.
So Ricky, how many people, how many students does this actually affect yearly? Do we have any idea who?
So, part of the reason why kind of the SARB has gotten started this year and why we're planning for next year, before looking at this, I would have said it's not going to affect that many students. After getting in and working on this for the past couple of months, this has the potential to affect a lot of kids in our district. There's up to like, I had my administrative assistants run this at the beginning of February, we were up to like 250 kids that had the potential to lose credit or be retained. Yeah, so it's, yeah, it's a serious issue.
So these totals are from NRS or these are what we are deciding on?
Yeah. So these, these totals are from NRS. The one that's not is the 90%, the minimum attendance requirement.
Oh, okay.
The minimum, theoretically, we could pick zero or we could pick 100. Most districts have chosen 90. But the circumstance absences, the domestic absences, those all fall into place based off of that number. The circumstance absences are straight from NRS.
Do you, and I know your story, do you believe that, like, if we adopt, say, that 90% rule and go down this road and we're holding kids back based on absences, that maybe we're out of their control? I mean, are we, are we helping them? Are we providing leverage in the appropriate place to help these kids?
Yeah. And that's going to be on my next slide. But basically, the NRS is written to protect those students. That's why that may is built in there. Because it's really, if the kid's making the effort, they're doing the work, we don't want to hold them back. Because we know that holding them back, the odds of them completing school go down significantly every year that they are held back or when they fail a course. So one of the things that the SARB committee, one of our interventions, is, we have right now a really huge committee. There's a lot of stakeholders that were at our last meeting. We're splitting up into kind of one subcommittee that's going to focus on attendance. And we're going to develop, we want to develop like a continuum of services for students to intervene before they're failing. So that at one extreme of that continuum, it's kind of, we're figuring, they're going to figure out what can schools do to incentivize coming to school? What can they do to get kids to show up kind of preventively? Kids that are in the middle of that continuum, we're saying, how could we get the Ron Wood Center involved? How could we get other community groups involved to find resources to help assist getting these kids in, so that they're able to attend more frequently? At the further extreme, for student, for families that are offered resources that kind of refuse to take advantage of them, students have atrocious attendance, it might be DCFS getting involved and pursuing ed neglect or kind of similar, kind of more legal kind of options. So this group wants to look at those, to set it up so that district-wide, each school kind of has a plan to kind of address these attendance numbers. Because right now, it's kind of hit and miss. Different schools are doing different things. And we want to come up with a plan for every school, figure out what's working, what's not working, and then adjust from there.
Just a question. At our Carson Middle School PTA meeting, Dr. Ward Dijosef explained that if the parent does not send in a note or call within three days, it will be classified as a truancy. Is that correct?
Yeah. So this first part, we're talking just attendance. So in attendance, in NRS, there's not really anything to compel to get kids to school. But we see this as kind of a community issue, like what can we do? We have the folks from DCFS at the table, we have the folks from Carson Health, we have the folks from the Ron Wood Center, we have our site administrators. What could we do to develop a plan for chronic absenteeism? The second charge of the SARB are what are referred to as truancies. So truancies are when the student's there and they don't bring a note. So first off, if a kid's absent from school and we don't receive a note, it goes into now Power School, next year Infinite Campus, is an unverified absence. In NRS, we have three days to clear that absence. So if the student brings in a note, that unverified absence changes to something else. If they don't bring in a note, technically that turns into a truancy. So we're going to track different types of truancy. So if the parent brings that note after three days, technically it's.
Because it's in the bottom of the backpack?
Yeah. Yeah, so technically that would be a truancy, but we're going to code that in Infinite Campus so that we know which type of truancy that is. After a student, we're going to do our best to stay on top of those truancies. After a student receives three of these truancies, and keep in mind, these truancies can be grouped together. So like if I ditch three days in a row and the school's not able to get ahold of me or my parent, that's not going to count as three different truancies. That would just be one truancy. Once we do that three times, the student becomes labeled a habitual truant. So NRS says that we, they shall be labeled a habitual truant. Their fourth truancy, they have to go before the SARB, before the SARB committee. And they could be assigned community service or a fine. This is more of the, kind of the legal aspect. There's going to be, there's a subcommittee of this SARB that's going to be holding those hearings. The big thing for next year is we need to get the word out about that three days to excuse the absences. Making sure that parents have the right information inside Powers or inside Infinite Campus so that we're calling home, getting ahold of the right person so that they can, because they can excuse these verbally or written. But that three days is kind of a big deal. And this is another area where, so if we rewinded back a few years, Washoe and Douglas went through the same process. When they went through, their number of truancies were outrageous. I mean, they were in hearings for multiple days several times a month. After, if you fast forward three years, both of them, now they're dealing with a handful of kids that are truancy. I think Douglas, they're up to like 30 this year. Washoe, district-wide, I want to say they were at 120 kids for their whole district. Us right now, we're, if this applied, we would probably have 1,000 kids that kind of met this requirement right now. So the more that we could get the word out for next year, I think this number will go down so we're able to focus on the kids that truly are truant.
With the phone calls and the three days, is that going to put an additional burden on our attendance staff? Is there possibly the need for additional staff members there?
So a couple of things that fortunately kind of fell into place. So with the, on the attendance side, that approach is going to require social workers, like a social worker type approach. Fortunately, we've, we're able to hire a bunch of social workers. So I think that there's going to be some additional support there. Some of the work should already be happening. Some of those calls are already taking place. Parents should be receiving a robo-call. They should be also be receiving a call from the office. However, sometimes the, the phone numbers that are in Power School aren't up to date. So there were, initially, there's going to be a burden on everybody. I think I'm going to have a lot of full days that I'm going to be doing this work instead of the work I would usually do. Hopefully, once things fall into place, that workload will go down and we'll have more kids in our seats.
With our SROs now in the middle schools and the high school, will they be able to help out with this as it gets?
Yes.
As soon as we pin down who's-
Yeah, so at our last meeting, we had, all of the newly hired SROs were there. There will be at least one of them that will serve on the hearings because they're ultimately, the way it's set up in our district, they're the ones that will have to issue the citations. And so, and they're also, currently, they're working closely with our, our VPs because they're in charge of truancy and attendance. So a lot of them are showing up currently. If there's nothing big happening that day, if there's not anything that they have to deal with, they're out making phone calls. They're making visits to kids that are, kind of have a long list of attendance issues and trying to get those resolved now. Yeah, we were fortunate for the, before we got the social workers and the SROs, yeah, I was worried. I didn't know what I was going to do. But some, some resources have fallen into place.
Well Ricky, thanks. I know you're going to come to us eventually as an action item for this. And so I don't have a problem with it in theory. I think we want to keep our kids in school. You know, I know we're going to have some, and it'll be, it'll be a lesser amount. It'll be the minority group of students as opposed to the, the larger number. But you'll have some good kids, if you will, that for everything from sports to extracurricular activities out of school to the occasional getting sick and mom and dad forgetting to say, hey, they were sick, that could fall potentially into this number. And I just want to make sure we have enough flexibility built into it to where we're not labeling, you know, we're not labeling a good kid with a, with a bad label. And, you know, having a kid that's achieving and doing everything we're asking them to do, not accidentally falling into this hole, if you will.
Yeah, and that's-
That would be all I would ask.
Yeah, and then, and that's where, on that attendance side, those, that social worker approach will be to kind of look at those kids individually to figure out what's going on. Because pretty much, I talked to a couple of different superintendents and all of them had the story of the kid that would have been valedictorian, but they were working at McDonald's to support the family. So they had more attendance, more absences than they were supposed to. And kind of what do you do? Do you keep that kid from moving on with their life? Or do you let them be valedictorian?
Just a question that I'm just noticing right now. On page two, that medical absences, if they're from the parent's note or from the doctor's note, will be changed to domestic if the student does not complete the makeup work. But school activities are not, and they're exempt and don't count for loss of credit. So I, I guess, how many student acti, you know, because sporting activity, that's a school activity.
Yeah, because technically, the, the school activities don't count as absences. They, they're in our student information system. So we have to document that the kid's not there. But they're, they're like in school suspension. You're at school, you receive credit for being there.
Okay, but do they have their, I guess, my question relates to their makeup work? Because they still have to make up the work that they miss during that.
They also have eligibility requirements for the sport. So if they're not making up the work, when they do their grade checks, they could be benched, benched. And then there's repercussions. If it keeps up, they could be off the team.
Yeah, well, well, that affects, I, we've, we've run into that with my son doing sports. When he was in middle school, he didn't seem to make the connection that an excused absence for a sport meant you had to actually do the work. And he, we made it painfully clear. But that, the idea is, you know, that goes towards absences, but they still have to do the work to get the grade and whatnot, so.
And the way, the way I equate that out, it's like, as professionals, sometimes we're not in the office or in the district because we're away on school business. That doesn't come off of our, our absences and our paycheck, you know, or in that record. But the work is still there. We still need to make that work up. So it's kind of the same, same kind of conditioning for the student.
Do we have any other comments or questions for Dr. Medina? If not, I guess we'll look forward to seeing that in a more final draft, if you will.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to item 10. We're just moving right along here. Informational update on the Race to the Top Grant in Carson City School District. This is for discussion only, and we have Dr. Pierre.
Thank you, President Cassiel, members of the board, Mr. Stokes, Mrs. Kima. Again, this is kind of a great position to be in because I always seem to be bringing good news because our teachers are making great progress. There are things that, and we'll talk a little bit about that today, that are some struggles that they're facing. But also, for the most part, the struggles are turning into great successes. And so we'll share a little bit about that today. So the first one is feedback that we got from the U.S. Department of Education. So 17 school districts are Race to the Top recipients. All 17 districts were required to report their credit accrual or pass percentages. And only two of the 17 showed significant improvement in their pass percentages, and we were one of them. So as you can see, the credit accrual in our district has improved significantly since 2012. The high school data is not listed, but essentially it was below 70%. So it was actually in the 60s. So only 60% of our students at the high school level in 12 and 13 met all their academic obligations and passed all their classes. Even though it's not shown here, those are the, that's roughly the percentage that they had. So you can see, we're heading in the right direction. And this is big because you're thinking in terms of credit accrual, right? So if a kid passes all their classes, they're on time to graduate. And remember, our greatest barrier to graduation is not the proficiency exam. It's the number of credits accrued by the student, both in the middle school and high school level. Okay, so there's some wins here with Carson High, but I'm also going to tell you that we've learned now that there's some challenges here that we want to talk about. So you'll see our pass rates are roughly at 20% for some of those groups, 18%, 17%. So that's an area of concern. That means that we still have one in five kids at the semester who are not meeting their academic obligations and failing at least one course, which means at some point in time, they're going to have to make that up. And we have some wins in that. But, but I want to kind of point out to what the high school has faced this year. So we've heard the middle school, and it was very positive. They were able to provide you feedback. Remember, the pace for them has been about five years for this. So now when we look at Carson High and Pioneer, note that they were finishing their curriculum. They added one-to-one, and they added NEPF all in the same year. So each one of those is a significant change in practice and expectations and time commitment and professionalism and everything related to that. And they've had to take all three on all at the same time. And typically, we try and roll things out with pace. I have great respect for Mr. Stokes and Mrs. Kima because they have this sense of pace for our district. But because of the way these initiatives were rolled out, not by choice, but by requirement, it had to all come at the same time. So great credit needs to be shared with Mrs. Fuson and her staff in, in this process. But we have ways to go, and we do need to provide some support. But I'm going to give you a great story. And that is, I had an opportunity to observe Mr. Vickery's class last week. But I'm going to kind of tell you a story about he and his department. So in science, they, about a month and a half ago or so, all of them were giving their benchmark assessments and their pass rates were between 55 and 75%, which for them, they were not, they're not happy about those. Some of the teachers were able to make a move right now. But, but a great example was Mr. Vickery, which is phenomenal. He worked very closely with the implementation specialist, Mr. Butler, and really looked at, okay, let me look at the learning guides. Let me look at the learning targets. Did I teach them well? And so he went back and looked, and he said, you know what? I don't think I covered that well. But he had yet to use the formative component of the Mastery Connect piece. In other words, he wasn't checking for understanding and gathering data. He may have been checking for understanding, but he wasn't gathering the data. He couldn't go back and find out. So the next month, for the next unit, he focused on the formative piece and gathering data and making sure the kids had the data, and then looking at the results. So his particular pass rates went from 71% to 82% of the students meeting the, the expectation. So you see, by him having a kind of a growth mindset in the experience, he right away has been able to make that adjustment. And his goal really is to get 90% of his kids to get through the next benchmark. And so he has laid that foundation. Not every teacher is ready to go through that mindset, that piece, right now. And so this is really a lot of one-on-one. These teachers are working one-on-one with an implementation specialist. They get an opportunity to try it. They get coaching, they get feedback, and they go and they move forward, and they're able to do that. So remember, we have 108 teachers at Carson High School, and each one of them are varying that rollout. So as you may hear some uncomfortableness, note too, there's a significant shift about to happen for many of them. So think about the teachers that you had. You're in school, they give you an activity. You do the activity, you fill out the paper, you turn the paper in, they write a percentage, and they put it in the grade book. Okay, did you hear me say learning target? Did you hear me say mastery? Did you hear me say that connection between knowing whether kids have mastered it or not? That is not what that experience is about. What we're asking our teachers to do is to shift and say, all right, this is what the learning guides are. This is what the learning targets are. And I'm going to build my instruction and provide feedback to my students. So together, we're going to dance that dance, and we're going to reach mastery. That's a whole different conversation. And it's a significant shift in their planning, in their practices, and some of them in their belief systems. So they're in that stage. And you heard the comment a little while ago about Apperson? When we brought Apperson on, part of the issue you heard was because of Apperson, and part of the issue was what I just described for you, the change in professional practice that's associated with this shift. So our high school teachers are right in this right now. So if you're hearing some uncomfortable conversation, that's that teacher saying, oh my gosh, I have to change completely what I'm doing. I have to change my planning, I have to change my practice. I'm uncomfortable. I'm reaching out, I'm telling you, I'm uncomfortable. So you're going to hear this right now for a while. And you're going to hear it for a while, maybe six months, seven months, until they start to become comfortable with this shift to this, this practice. So as they become comfortable, though, we should start seeing these numbers change. So by this time next year, what I would hope to see, if they follow suit with other parts of our district, that we would be at least 5% to 8% better than what we are right now in terms of our pass rates when we get there to this time next year. This was our semester mark. So we'll wait and see. We'll see at each quarter if we're making progress that we hope and if we're heading in the right direction. Because once they make the shift to learning targets, kids then understand the material, they perform better, and their scores go up. Okay, this is Pioneer. This number, even though it shows a high failure rate, this is a good number for them. And it's not a good number for, for, for them as we move forward. This number is going to go up. They're heading in the right direction. They've got two or three teachers over there right now that are phenomenal. In fact, we're going to have visitors come to the district. We're going to their classrooms at Pioneer because they are doing a tremendous job using the technology, connecting kids to the learning guides and all those particular pieces. So this number is not the best number, but it's going in the right direction. So we're going to see that number go up. So kudos to, to Mr. Zona and his staff making the shift. Now, this is pretty amazing. So now I want you to see the middle school data, and I'm going to show you a couple of pieces that, when I shared this with the people in DC, they are amazed. And, and the teachers at Eagle Valley and Carson Middle need to be recognized for this work. So first off, at the semester, this is the pass rate for Eagle Valley overall. So you see, it's pretty high. We're looking at 91% of our students are passing all their classes and meeting their academic obligations. And it's following with the benchmark. So we've done a preliminary correlation between the benchmark scores, scores on those unit tests, and the pass rates. So we were a little bit worried, is there grade fluct, is there grade inflation? Not in accordance with what the benchmarks are telling us. Kids are doing well on the benchmarks. So this is good news. Look at the IEP pass rate. Our IEP students at Eagle Valley, 86% are meeting all of their academic obligations. This is really a good number. Here's a better one. Look at LEP. 92%. This is amazing. And they're really working, student by student, on both those campuses to find those students, provide the support, and get them moving forward. Carson Middle, even better. 95% of all students, entire population. IEP, 93%. LEP, LEP students in our district, 97% are meeting all their academic obligations. Those campuses are rocking right now. And they've, they've got to grow. And we're going to talk more about what they have coming next. But they're heading in the right direction. And if you see those folks, please congratulate them. This is, these are big numbers. Yep.
Those are fantastic numbers. The slide you had a couple back showed sixth grade, I think, up at like 97%, which is-
Yeah.
Which is fantastic. And I'm wondering how much interaction's going on between the elementary and the middle school teachers? I mean, I'm imagining there's a component that, you know, we want to certainly compliment our middle school teachers, but I'm, I'm thinking these elementary school teachers are, are-
Are preparing kids.
Prepared properly.
So we're, and we're going to totally agree with you on that. And I'm probably remiss for not mentioning that. So yes, our middle schools are preparing our kids coming forward, and we're aligning more and more as we move forward. So as the curriculum work that Mrs. Kima and her team are working on and Dr. Medina goes forward, we can even further align that. So thank you for recognizing that. Whoops, what'd I do? Wrong button. All right, so let's talk about online. So we want to note that some folks originally, when we brought the online program on, thought online was easy. But then when our teachers really dug into it, they recognized that the rigor is quite high. Well, if you look at Pioneer, quite high rigor in our online classes, and 84% of our students taking online classes are passing all the online courses that they're taking, whether they be taking two or they're taking all day. So we have 97 students that are participating in one form or another of online, and 81 of those students have passed all of their online classes. So that's a great compliment. Remember, that's competency-based. They have to know the material to earn the credit. So it's a big win. Yep.
Can I mention something about that? And that is, is nationwide, usually, that's about a 50% deal. And this is so large that our companies that were, the company that we're working with has found some more advertising dollars for us because of our data. So we're working with Mr. Zona and Pearson tomorrow morning, coming up with an additional marketing plan and dollars to put towards that.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Kima. So now let's talk about credit recovery at Carson High School. So Carson High has now added a credit recovery component to the campus. So they have two teachers who teach during the day plus after school for kids to earn additional credits. So if students fail the class and needs to earn credit recovery, we can do that through this online model, which gives the students compressed curriculum that focuses on the key structural elements of each course. And so in, in essence, we're giving them deep, rich remediation and support in each one of these areas. So you can see that we're 282 students at Carson High this, first, up to this point this year who have attempted credits through the online program. There were 540 credits applied for or taken during this time by those 282 students. The number of credits that have been earned, these are half-credit semester credits, are 263. The number of credits that were failed were 29. And right now, the number of credits in progress are 248. So if those students that are in progress finish, we will have recouped over 500 half-credit units for students in this process. Now, this is a number I want to go down, but it's to go down based on what we talked about before. I want kids to pass the class the first time so that we don't need to use the credit recovery to catch up. Okay, so great kudos to, to Mrs. Fuson and her team for this number, but it's one we want to work on reducing.
Do they have kind of a realistic expectation on what kind of drop in that credit recovery they might see?
So that's something we're going to have to look closer as we move forward. So if we can push that number, if the numbers that we have before go over 90, we're going to, our, our graduation rate is going to flip, and that number's going to drop significantly. So that's really the key. So it's that movement from 80 to 90. There's quite a few kids that fall into that range and quite a few- and quite a few credits that need to be made up. Okay, so what's happening? So there's some really cool things happening. So most of you know who Jeremy Lewis is at Carson Middle School, he's also in the doctoral program. And so right now, he's running our corp, as part of his doctoral work, running his correlate, running our correlation studies for our middle school assessments. So aligning our benchmark assessments with the S-BAC moving forward. So one of the great examples we have, and I want you to think of this grid, I don't have anything to show you because when he's in this initial stage of developing like researchers are, he's got this piece of paper that's about this long that he's taped together of each one of the pieces for the class so that he can see all the things that are happening. So on the left side of his paper, which goes down like three pages down, is all the learning targets that are taught within our English, eighth grade English, for example. And then across the top are all of the state standards that are going to be assessed on the S-BAC. And so then he went through all the components of the S-BAC based on last year's results, and our learning targets, and then he verified that every single one of those are contained in that assessment preparation. So that was a home run. And not only the home run there, secondly was that the key elements were all covered before the assessment comes. So we know that, we have the right curriculum, we know that the curriculum's aligned, and we know that the students will see the material before the assessment. So that's a win. Now, the next part we're really hoping for, and that is this relationship, we're hoping for a relationship. Kids that do poorly on the benchmark assessment also do poorly on the S-BAC assessment. Kids that do well on our benchmark assessments do well on the S-BAC assessments. If that happens, we know our curriculum is aligned, and so we can really invest on instruction and moving kids through. If we find holes or areas that aren't matching up, we're going to be able to fix those. Now, the neat part about that is, I'm not sure any other district in Nevada, and very few districts across the country can do that kind of comparison. So it's kudos again to Ricky, his leadership, the university helping us with that, and those folks that are in that program working on getting that aligned. And this is work we will do every year. This process will happen for the S-BAC, the end-of-course exam, it's going on now. Our high school folks at end-of-course exam have done the very same thing that I described with Jeremy, and things are looking very good. In fact, we're ahead in this process. I also want you to recognize that at our end-of-course exam developments, our implementation specialists are serving on the state committees for the development of the remediation tools, the work with the assessments, all of that. And they're highly recognized members of those teams because of their knowledge and their work. They're doing a great job. They're representing us well. And other districts are saying they wish they worked in Carson because of some of the things we're talking about. Okay. So I talked about that kind of assessment development, that correlation. So each, every six months, we do a program review. So if there's corrections that need to be made to our curriculum, or assessment, or there's a blended learning experience that one of our teacher has that the others want to add, every six months, we are able to update our curriculum. Once again, I'm not sure of any other district in the country that can do that. So every six months, we can update it, we can adjust the assessments, we can let it roll. And that's a lot of what implementation specialists do. Listen to the teachers, revise, update, work with Mastery Connect, get it all rolling. Okay? The next piece that we want to talk about is the curriculum growth, or blended learning model. So we're going to be looking more and more at blended learning to infuse into this. A great example might be, you may have a blended learning program that helps students learn their math facts. You get a middle school student who doesn't learn his math facts. If we're able to find a blended learning program that helps, that student can work on those math facts both in class and out of class, but get that ongoing experience. So we're looking more and more for blended learning opportunities similar to the one I described. Now here's going to be the neat part for our middle schools. So you heard Carrie and Dan speaking a little bit earlier, and it's going to happen in our high schools as well. We are shifting to what we're going to call kind of a, I would say, they called it a laboratory classroom or model classroom, so we haven't got the name quite figured out. But essentially, what we're going to do is seek teachers to really truly implement the learner-centered model in their classroom, and to try stuff out. Be a place where others can come and look, and can come and see it, and they can really work on their profession. And we're going to invite as many teachers who would like to serve in that role as we can. They'll work directly with the implementation specialists and really go after that. At the same time, thanks to Mrs. Kima and working with Robert Ma, there'll be a 360 camera in that. So a teacher can literally teach their lesson, record it, and see what his kids or her kids did during the lesson, and use that just like an athlete does when they videotape so that they can work on growing their instructional practices. So for our middle schools, the emphasis moving forward is assigning our implementation specialists to help build these model classrooms, but also to support all instruction for all teachers. In other words, give them time to refine, to learn, to practice, to do things. And it's okay if you try something and it doesn't work. That's the culture we want to build. It didn't work, great, let's try something that does work. Okay? At the high school, we have to build the support on some of the other things first. First, we have to help them use Mastery Connect. First, we have to help them feel comfortable with one-to-one. Then as those parts become more natural to them, then we can focus with them more on Now here's a really, another really neat thing, and I want to thank Dr. Delphin because he and I had the opportunity to work at the, can you remind me the name of the conference?
Teacher Equity.
Teacher Equity. The teacher, it's a national conference, Teacher Equity Forum. And I've also been invited to participate on a national forum with the US Department of Ed on this topic. Why? Because think of the learner-centered model, what happens? Every classroom has a set of learning targets and learning expectations. Every student has access to a great curriculum. Every student has access to assessment. Every student has access to data. You see, it has the potential to be that deal-breaker for poverty, for ELL. So our system has that. And so the US Department of Ed and the group that we worked with down in San Diego recognize the difference that this system can offer to many kids. So we were fortunate enough, Dr. Delphin and I, to present at the State Superintendent's Conference as well, the NASA Conference. And out of those two experiences, we've had 10 school districts in Nevada ask to come to Carson City to learn about the learner-centered model. So that they have the opportunity to provide the same opportunities for their students. And one of the districts in Humboldt County has received financial award already for two of their schools, and is, wants to use this as that model. So we'll have a lot of conversations with districts and learn, what we're hoping for is to build a consortium of districts, so that we're all working on this together, which would also allow us to maybe seek resources to help our district in this process. Because as a state, we don't perform well, as you know, but if we come together as a consortium, that gives us more power to seek more support. So we hope that these experiences become fruitful for them and for us as well, and that we can maybe help support the growth of our system with those. So what's the rest of the story? So I kind of want to end with just a really positive note for, and then I'll answer questions that you have, just for everyone involved in this initiative. Because as you know, I've been coming to you really since the SIG grant, which is over six years, but we have asked teachers to change everything they do. We have asked them to look at things differently. But at the same time, we've seen significant gains by our students, significant opportunity increases, significantly more students earning credits. So we have a long ways to go, we've got a lot of work left ahead of us, but kudos to all of you and all of them for their work. Questions?
Questions? Stacy?
So after our Race to the Top grant goes away, are we still going to be able to do those six months of updating and changing the curriculum?
Yes, but we're built in, and we're working with Mr. Stokes to retain as much of these programs as we can. The implementation specialists are essential. I will tell you that teachers will not be able to change their practices, we will not be able to update the curriculum, we will not be able to maintain the assessments without the expertise and professionalism and the ongoing work of those people. We can't do it. There's a regular teacher, or even a department chair does not have the time in the day to cover that. And we've tried that. We've actually had department chairs serve as an implementation specialist, and there just wasn't enough time, they were just overwhelmed. And it was unfair to them, and I, to this day, feel bad about setting up that experience for that person. So that's an investment we're going to have to make if we're going to retain this for our teachers and our students.
And how many implement specialists do we have right now?
We have, I think, nine. Is that right? Or is there 10? I'll have to count. So I have five in the middle school.
But you would want to keep that same amount.
Yes, if we can, yes. Because right now, we're doing the best we can to make those shifts. So there may come a time in the future as our teachers, if more and more teachers have the model classroom, then you probably don't need as many. But right now, we've got just a few teachers that are going to learn that, then that number grows, then you don't need as many coaches. But right now, they still have a long way to go.
And you still have new people coming into the district, so I don't see that number going down.
Yeah.
Other questions? Steve?
In that thought with the implementation specialists, on the other hand, as we see our educators improve their efficacy and all, there seems to be a potential for teachers to be able to work with maybe a few more students so that we can spread our budget sensibly across the specialist and educators also. Am I, is that a sensible thing to consider being true, or you think that projects?
Well, it just depends on what happens. And that's one of the things that we have to really look at, is I can't project how fast these teachers are going to take on these new initiatives, right? So if they take them on very quickly, then that may require, may allow for a reduction of some of those implementation specialists, which then can be pushed back into the classroom. And those people will be amazing teachers, as you know. So it's just how fast can we make that happen? Remember, we're addressing something I'm not sure many people have addressed. When you really talk about instruction, I want to, I'm sorry this is long-winded, but I really want to explain what happens. So if you have a flexible mindset or a growth mindset, you will walk right up to your implementation specialist and you'll say, alright, I want to try this in my class, I want you to come help me set up my Mastery Connect, we're going to plan the lesson together, I'm going to teach, you're going to take notes or videotape, then we're going to come back together, or you as the implementation specialist are going to teach, and I'm going to watch, and we're going to have that. Okay, that's a natural experience. That's about 20% of our staff that feel that confident, that comfortable, will say, yes, I will do that. The others have this thing about having folks in their classroom. So how do you break through? Because as a coach, they can't, you can't walk up to them and say, I'm coming, because they're going to say, no, you're not. Right? But as an administrator, you have the authority to do that. And so there's this nice dance that needs to happen. You as the administrator, you as the instructional coach, you as the teacher come together, and you pick an area to work on together. And then as you begin to work on that together, and you as the teacher find success in that experience, and you begin to build a relationship with that implementation specialist, then that door starts to open. Okay? But that's really a one-on-one thing. So think about that. You're going to be, work with somebody for two weeks on this, and it's going to take you two weeks just to get that door turned. And that's just this normal concept, the way teachers are. So what we're trying to do is break that down and use the data systems to help accelerate that process. And we hope we can do it faster than that, but right now, we're kind of leading the game in this. So I can't turn to someone else and ask me to help, help me turn this. So we're doing, we're learning it as we go.
Do you have more?
Go ahead.
One other thing I just wanted to put out for consideration is, and you know, in use of the data, is what we do when kids are green at the beginning. And so how do we use this, use these data tools to provide extensions for them? And I think, obviously, I mean, in thinking of the classroom and what all the teachers are trying to accomplish, having the resources, and maybe moving towards using some implementation specialists to do some of that, like, well, what do you do when I have five kids that are green on my first assessment, and I don't have to do any more data analysis? Or maybe I do one more just to make sure that I'm, you know, or give them a couple of other ways to demonstrate quickly that they got the concept? So I mean, I'm not saying that it needs to happen right now, or that, but just some thought as we go forward, if we're, if we're still continuing with implementation specialists and using the data, just how we expand that for them.
So let me second that. I totally agree with what you're saying there and support that concept, and our implementation specialists do as well. So it's a matter of breaking that door down and going, and it's exactly what you say. So if you walk into an, I'll give a great example. You walk into an elementary classroom and you see this group of kids over here, and you see a group of kids over here, and you see this teacher going, okay, I get that group going, and then they race over here and they go to that group. When you go to high school, it takes right now a special teacher to do that, but that is the situation that needs to happen to meet what you've described. We've got to have a group of kids that are working at a different pace, are working on another thing, and at the same time, the teacher's working with another group over here and running back and forth. Yep?
And just to clarify, I'm not saying that teachers aren't doing that. I know that extensions are happening, and there's, you know, kids in the hall that are working on other things, and I, but I'm just saying, thinking at it as, from an administrative standpoint, and providing those resources so that teachers aren't always having to be back and forth on that.
Perfect. Did you have something, Mr. Reynolds? I feel like I didn't answer all your questions.
I had something that's somewhat, on somewhat of a tangent, and then just a comment. But I've been reading some stuff lately, and just curious regarding it, but I've been reading some things, some of it generated out of California, where there's beginning to build up, I guess, some amount of support to the idea that high-stakes testing such as the S-BAC can't align with some of the things that we're trying to do with our metacognitive response, and, you know, that they just don't mesh. And you were talking a few minutes ago about our, our person who's done a great job of aligning high-stake testing with our learning, learning guides and all, and then just, I mean, you have to have seen some of this stuff coming out. What's your opinion at this time?
Absolutely. So when we think about a kid doing a great project, right? And they have a rubric that they follow, and they create this great project, and all the steps that go along with it, and they gain the feedback. When you take an S-BAC exam, you don't necessarily get that same experience and that same outcome. And so we have to really emphasize, there's a couple things here. Number one, just because we're prepared and ready for the S-BAC, we may not be the, at the 90th percentile, because so many kids are taking that test now, if we're at the 50th or 55, that might be a great place for us. I'm not sure, we won't know that. The other part is, is really comes back to what you said, that testing isn't everything. It's all the things that lead up to being college and career-ready. So we want, we're now developing a system called the Clearinghouse System, where we have a company that Dr. Medina is working on. So every kid that leaves Carson City and enters post-secondary education, we're beginning to track. So we want to find out, when they leave us, how well are they doing in college? These are things we want to know. How many kids are in CTE? How many kids earn credits? So the S-BAC and the end-of-course exam are a small part of our obligation to our kids. It's all these other things that we just mentioned, we've got to consider all of them. So thank you for raising that question, Mr. Reynolds.
One last comment, as I see some of the results from our activities, I'm really pleased to see the change in the middle school. I know that, and I know it's talked about earlier, that probably some of this has come from changes in elementary and all. But I know when we started talking about some of this stuff seven or eight years ago, even before Race to the Top was, maybe, we even considered, before we even considered applying it, I think it was understood that if we have a student who still believes in education and gets to high school with the capability to do high school and a desire to do high school, we're not going to work, we're not going to have to work anywhere near as hard as we have been to have that person be a good student in high school. And I think we're going to see that reflected in our high school. I mean, I can't believe anything different when I see the scores that we're seeing now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a thought that I had about the, the teachers' hesitancy sometimes to have implementation specialists come in. I know a lot of teachers have the NEPF on their mind, and perhaps once that is a little more understood, and it's not quite as scary, that may make those doors open up a little bit, hopefully.
Yes, thank you for that. And I think, I think you're heading in the right direction on that, because as, the neat part about being in the learner-centered model is if you're really good at it, that matches the NEPF. So it is a good place, I think, to enter. Thank you for that.
You know, I was thinking, Dr. Burtare, the, obviously, the implementation specialists on this are key, as are the teachers. When we, we have some really good people as implementation specialists, how paired up are they? I mean, somebody who maybe was a middle or a high school teacher who became an implementation specialist, that maybe is now, and maybe they're not, down at the middle or elementary level, where that really wasn't their expertise. But I see this as an opportunity, and hopefully it has been, for the teacher to educate the implementation specialist. But how have we been able to pair them up? Or is pairing them up in their grade-level expertise, if you will, a good thing?
So there's going to be, we'll see, as we move to instruction, we'll see a little more blending of the experience. But they, we do really need to maintain this, especially at the secondary level, content expertise. And so we've kept them in their content, and part of it is what we talked about earlier. They can verify the quality of the assessment. They can make sure everything is up to date. So that's part of their duties. But at the same time, when you're teaching good instruction, you don't necessarily, and you're a math implementation specialist, you might be able to help somebody in English with a particular type of lesson or using Mastery Connect. So I think we'll see this shared experience at the middle school and high school level, where you have content requirements, but at the same time, you can support instruction across various contents. In terms of the elementary, remember now, for our elementary implementation specialists, they're developing the curriculum in science. So they're taking the step that our folks were taking before, and so they're learning about that curriculum and assessment development part that our other folks have already been through.
No, I just, I just found it interesting, and a little bit of interaction I've had with them, you know, I'm kind of, I was just curious. That was a component that I really wasn't sure about, but I see that as being kind of a key. But it does make sense to me that if we compare them up at the level they're used to working at, we can raise that expertise. But at the same time, I think if you are at a high school or a middle school level, and at some point, you're teaching at a lower level, you really provide some insight and some understanding as to, here's what they're expecting up here. And likewise, say, the elementary teacher can say, "Well, that's great, but here's all we can do here." And that mesh, I think, could really be a positive thing as we go forward.
I would agree with you, and I think that's great insight.
Just a comment. And Steve, now going forward, based on what was said by Karyn Dan and what you said, what can we do as a board? Now, we want to, we want to keep this thing going strong.
Sure.
But as a board, to support your efforts, but in the, based upon all the things, do we need to reach out more to the teachers to show appreciation? Because it was stated by Karyn Dan, the teachers are doing the work. There's a lot of, there's a lot of burden on them. And I guess, can we do anything as a board to do a further outreach to help you make this thing successful in the next year and a half?
Sure. So that's a great question, and I'm not prepared to answer that right now. If you'll give me the opportunity to think a lot about that one, because I think there's a lot to be said with what you said, and if I can have some time to think about it, I think I can have a better answer.
I tell you, given our discussion, I'll tell you something that I think is going to be tough, that we're really going to have to find a way. And it's going to, you know, we've been through this program, what, three and a half years now, plus a year of planning before we even got it. And to hit a point here in six months and look at our budget and not support the implementation of the direction we've gone is going to send an immediate message out there that we don't believe in it. So I think we're going to have to, you know, we're going to find a way to get, you know, to keep this going.
Thank you.
Good. Any other questions? Dr. Breda, thank you.
Thank you all very much. I so appreciate all the contributions each of you make in our, in our district. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to item 11, Discussion and Possible Action. Consider Proposed Changes to the Following CCSD Policy. Second reading of Policy 904, School Visitors, and again, possible action. Sue.
During the fir, this is Susan Kima, for the record. During the first reading of Policy 904, it was suggested to include a statement that allows administrators to deny, remove from their campuses violators of school or district policy. That statement has been added to this version of the policy, and unless you have other suggestions, I seek approval.
Susan, when we say cite administrators, if a cite administrator isn't on hand at that time, they're allowed to designate this duty? Thank you.
Any questions or concerns from the board? Anybody want to entertain a motion? Click.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees adopt the revisions as presented and approve March 22, 2016, as the revised date on CCSD Policy 904, School Visitors.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Comments from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Had a look at Brian. Okay, we'll move on to item 12, Presentation and Discussion of Tentative Budget Scenarios and Assumptions for Fiscal Year 2016, 2017, to Include Information on Overtime at the District Office. This is for discussion only, and we have Andrew Feeling and possibly Superintendent Stokes.
Good evening, trustees. Thank you. Coming up here soon, in the next couple of weeks, is the date of April 15. By NRS, the district is required to submit a tentative budget for the next fiscal year to the Department of Taxation. It's not something that the board approves. It's just something that is up for discussion at the next board meeting. Ultimately, it's the final budget, two months from now, that will be heard at the May 18 meeting at the district office, which is the final budget that the board does approve, that we also then send to taxation. Prior to the April, at the April 12 meeting, I'll walk through the, kind of the finer detail of the tentative budget. You'll be provided with a lot of, a lot of material ahead before that meeting, so you get to look as deep as you like into that budget at that point. So today is just kind of a broad overview of what is going to be in that budget, what it looks like at this point. There's still more work, more information that I'm waiting for, and still some more work that needs to be done from the budgeting side before we do get to that final budget. So these numbers are still, this budget in April is the tentative budget, and we are still, you know, it is very tentative. So, so the presentation today is, back in December, I wowed you with three years of budget and financial information from fiscal 15, fiscal 15, 16, and 17. So today, we are talking about fiscal 17, and just kind of updating some of that information and getting into a little more detail, but really just kind of a broad overview, what we're looking at and changes coming up that we're looking to make for next year. So first, just, again, the primary determinant for our revenue stream, our largest revenue stream, is the number of students we have. And so based on current, or this year, as of count day, and count day, it's going to be hard to get rid of this as a benchmark point, but at the beginning of this year, we had 7,563 students on count day. Next year, based on my projections, we should be up at several or some more than that. The high school class leaving is a smaller class. We're not really expecting a large incoming kindergarten class, but there is, part of this enrollment projection, there is some inflation put in there for expected growth in the area, so it slowly starts to recognize that over time. I think the most heartening thing I've seen with that has been the actual slight increase in growth that we have seen so far this school year. So, and again, that's the first time in five years that we've seen that. So hopefully, that's an indicator, I think it's an indicator of some really great things going on at the high school level, and that's really where we saw, where we see the drop off, but hopefully of some growth in the, in the community as well. The way that works out for the traditional way you'd count weighted enrollment, there would be a slight increase, but then, of course, we now have this average daily enrollment. So I, over time, using historical data, I assume that there's going to be a drop in enrollment over time. And so you can see from what the weighted enrollment would have been this year had we used just count day versus what was actually budgeted, there's a decrease. And so I would expect the same thing for next year. However, I'm using three years of historical data, so now that we have a really good year this year, that will likely help up that estimate a little bit. So again, this is tentative. Once, once May comes, I'll rerun my, my enrollment projection, and it's likely that, that average daily enrollment estimate will bump up. I would expect that to come in higher based on the success of this year. The, in SB, I can't think of the, I think it's 515 now, I'm losing, losing the number. It was laid out what the per pupil amounts would be from the state in determining the, within the Nevada Plan, what our revenue, our funding would be, and then through the, there's an equity allocation model where they further refine how much money you receive. This year, we received $6,908 per student. Right now, it's pegged to be $6,996 per student for next year. That will change. That will not be the final number we get. There's always an update that happens relative to the amount of property taxes that are collected in the area. So when I, when I first came here, just over two years ago now, I think it was originally pegged to be 6742, and then it ended up being 6737, once it was finally said and done. So usually, the adjustment isn't that large, but it likely will change slightly. So you can see the actual change in revenue from the DSA through the Nevada Plan between this year, what was budgeted, and for next year, which is a change, an increase of about $685,000. The most, I guess, disappointing, frustrating part of this has been the tax cap, which we've spoken a little bit about previously, but normally, in a, in a given healthy economic situation where home values are going up, there's this 3% cap on, on property taxes. And so as a district, for the revenue we would receive, generally wouldn't expect to receive any more than a 3% increase year to year in ad valorem property taxes, local property taxes. Due to odds or unusual circumstances over the past 10 years and really low inflation over the last year, which is really due to energy prices collapsing, we are not seeing that normal, kind of close to 3% increase. And so the increase based on, and I'll, like I said, there's still a lot of information I'm, I'm waiting to get, and one of those things is kind of a final number on this taxes. But as of right now, it's only, I'm only expecting about $44,000 more in property taxes next year than I, than I got this year, or that we got this year. So that's, normally, we'd expect about a $300,000, maybe $350,000 increase, so that's a pretty significant impact on the district. Local school support tax, there is a large increase projected for next year. The unfortunate thing about that is, local school support tax really doesn't do much for the district. It's a, it's offset in the way that the Nevada Plan works. So if there's more local school support tax, that means the state gives us less aid. So that's, it's not, it looks like it should really be a positive, and in the end, it really doesn't make that large of a difference for us. If anything, it's an indicator of economic health, I think. So if that's going up and expected to go up, that means the local economy is getting better. Government services tax is up about $200,000 projected for next year. And so when you're looking at your local revenues that are generated from, from here, there is a significant increase over what was the previous year. But again, that's mostly due to that local school support tax, and that is then offset in what you'll see here, which is the state revenues. So you can see what we're, what we're expecting this year from the state in support versus next year in support. There's a fairly large decrease, about $1.7 million. And that's, again, due to that local school support tax, the expectation that it's going to go up. The, what we paid, what we lose in students charter schools, it's increasing slightly, but that, the number of students, that was something else with what was been happening at Silver State. They've now been granted another chance, so that, that number was lower previously, but now that they're going to have some more time, I had to bump that back up. Education savings accounts, which still impacts, will impact our revenues, and we're not, and we're not quite sure, since that was, that's been held up in court, in the courts, we're not quite sure what that's going to look like yet. Are there any questions at all so far? So total revenues for the year next year looks to increase by about $900, $930,000 from, from this year. And so again, there's still a lot out there. As much as we have much, we have more certainty this year than we did last year, there's still quite a few things that we're waiting for. So again, the per pupil amount will change coming up here. I believe we find out the final number in April. My average daily enrollment number will change based on what our May student count is, full-day case. So the state apparently is looking to, if you recall, in fiscal year 18, kindergartners become real human beings, and we get counted at 1.0. And so that's great, because that will, that is, that will really help the district out. That's a significant change, a significant growth in that revenue source. So what they're looking at doing is actually potentially staggering what that amount will be. They're going to probably, they're looking to try to inflate how much they give us for full-day kindergarten next year to kind of make it an easier transition into that higher amount, instead of just jumping it in the second year. So we're not quite sure what that's going to look like, and I'm not sure when we're going to find that out, but I know that's in the works right now. At the end of this week, we'll, we'll have a better feel for what our ad valorem taxes, the final, will look. Again, it's a lot lower, but we'll, we'll have a better number. Class size reduction, we know that the amount we receive for that will change. That's actually one of my greatest concerns, and that'll come up just a little bit later. And then we have all these competitive grants, and, you know, to the point, Mr. Reynolds, you know, the concern we have with all the Race to the Top and the things we're doing, and there's, there's so much that can be done with a lot of these new competitive grants that are out there, but they are competitive, and frustratingly, many of them are one-year grants. So it's, there's kind of a juggling game that's going to go on, I think, trying to see what we can do with some of those. And Mrs. Dockery is running around like crazy, trying to make that all happen for us. On the expense side, staffing costs, I have increasing by about $900,000. In our previous session, I said that's what all of our employees receiving their staff was worth, about $900,000. New positions within the district. So there's three, I guess, true positions that we're looking to add next year. And then there's one that really is a grant, and you're familiar with this, but we're, we're on the hook for, for part of the costs of the police officers that are, we now find in our school, these resource officers. And so altogether, that increase in costs is probably about $286,000. Mr. Stokes, would you want to talk about any of the positions at all?
Beginning with the strings teacher, I've met with Sue Kitz-Jesch, who, as you know, has been an instrumental part, no, maybe pun intended, to, to really give us and put us in a place where we benefited with our orchestra program within the school, very popular program. And she has reached the point in her career where she'd like to slow down a bit, still very willing to assist us and help us in, in maybe more of a consulting role. And so really, it's her recommendation, and in talking with our music teachers, that we provide some additional support along this way, which I would really like to see continue. I think we've all benefited, and I think it's a very popular program within our arts and music program. And so that recommendation is to essentially put someone full-time in our schools, and there would be a split assignment to support not only the middle schools, but also Carson High School. And, and the Carson City Symphony is still interested in helping to provide the after-school strings program for our young students. You heard Dr. Medina talk this evening about challenges associated with our truancy and attendance programs. And in looking at other school districts around us, those that have successful attendance and truancy programs have and truancy programs have someone at the district level who is helping to support this process. And as you heard tonight, just that, that concept is something that, that we recognize as something that can assist the, the staff members, especially the administrators, who are working at each of our sites, to take some of that workload from them, so that someone at the district level can help to coordinate and assist with those truancies and student attendance. And then, with regard to the HR analyst, it was requested that I talk a little bit about a condition that we had, starting back in the year 2012 to current times, when we have had clerical staff members who were paid overtime. And when, when this initially started, we had lost a key staff member, and we were also in a condition where our school district was laying off staff, and we were trying to do more with fewer people. And speaking to the staff at the time, they were convinced that they'd be able to manage some of the work effort associated with maintaining workload in human resources, also in fiscal services. And as a result, there was overtime that was provided to five separate individuals and job titles. And during that time, nearly five years' time, there was 8,520 and a half hours of overtime that was logged during that period of time. The total dollar amount that was affiliated with that extra time paid was $325,083. And the average annual cost during this period of time was approximately $65,060, $16. During that time, there were some changes that occurred in our operations. We had a, a, a new application process that was electronic. We had Obamacare, which came onboard. We had an antiquated system that we were working through, our employee insurance program that was part of our St. Mary's system. So, in addition to that, we had, of course, an individual who supports these meetings. So, within this time period, we, like I say, logged those hours and time. And since that time, the calculations that I've done, I think Mr. Feeling has his number a little bit higher than what I did, but for a mid-range human resource analyst to help take the burden off of those individuals who were, who were counting and putting in for the overtime is $55,316. And so, obviously, that annual, annualized number that I referred to earlier, $65,016, is higher than what we would project currently to hire a full-time human resource analyst that would help do some of that work effort. So, with that, a position has been flown currently, so there's a vacancy that's out there, looking for that individual. And then, also, working to take the executive board administrative assistant and put that position in as a salaried position, just based on the amount of time that Renee spends past the 40-hour work week in attending and supporting our school board meetings. So, those are the staffing positions that are strongly being considered for this next fiscal year. And if you have any questions about those, I try to address them.
Well, just as, you know, we're, we're talking about a tentative budget, and we'll have time to discuss from the time the tentative is submitted until the, the final budget. But, Richard, you and I were at an NNDAs meeting, that workforce education. We've got Dick Cale, who is working on a grant with Michelle Lewis. We've got about 50 new partners that want to come in and provide opportunities for kids, job shadow, internship exposure to the workplace and the fields of science, engineering, and the whole works. We need money set aside, number one, for transportation costs. They're wanting to do it, all we have to do is get them there. Not during the school day, but it could be the extended or after-school programs. So we've got to start thinking about, and we will in the next couple of months, get a dollar about, so this thing is ready. We've got willing partners to, to tell these kids how and why what they're learning in the classroom is applied, and why they're in there. Give meaning and, and finish the, the race to the top in, in a big way. So that's going to be considered. But we need also, you know, Alan has, has been the community relations coordinator, but, you know, he's been tied up in curriculum assessment in the arts program right now, he's been pulled off. Michelle Lewis can't do all this by herself in the CTE program. So, you know, we need to consider, do we need a halftime, a full-time position to, to close the circle? And, and just put this down as a, as a note. And then, through all of this, for the kids to record what they're being exposed to, what they're learning outside, beginning in the fourth grade, we've got to go back and revisit this e-portfolio, because we need a place to, to record this. And, and I like to, you know, just put this as a note, do, is that career cruising working out, or do we need something else to, to make this go? Because it's got, to, to add meaning for the kids, it's got to be recorded, so that they have building blocks to build on, even when they get to their senior projects, and they do something as a finale. It, it's something in a one-time deal. And, and the e-portfolio, if it's used from the fourth grade on, these kids have something to take with them when they leave high school to say, this is where I've been, this is what I've done. So I just want to put these out here, and, and I'm sure that we would have more in the next couple of months as we, as we talk about this, and then find out what makes sense. So I just want to get that on the record, it's, it's happening now, so.
Additional comments? Stacy?
Oh. The other thing is the kindergarten aides. We don't have one kindergarten aide for each kindergarten teacher at this point, do we?
That's correct. They share a portion of their day among other teachers, several teachers.
So would that be something that might come through the all-day kindergarten funding, that we might be able to get additional positions there?
We can certainly look into that.
Okay. And then, I guess, the other thing is, there's overtime in other departments that isn't being recorded because of a feel of backlash. And I don't know exactly how, I don't know if that came up on your survey, or, and after this last event with HR, I just kind of wonder if we have a policy about overtime, so that employees can feel more comfortable if they're, they are working overtime because of the circumstances that are going on at that time, like registration, or the beginning of the school year with registration, and now we have this new implement campus stuff. And so, I'm just kind of wondering if there's a policy, and if employees are aware of that, or if there's a culture in our schools that makes people feel like they shouldn't be put in for overtime.
Well, we typically have asked that overtime be approved. Obviously, when it snows, we've got to have chains put on the buses, and we have to have the shovel, or the, the sidewalk shoveled and ice melt put out. So if there's ever a safety, you know, life, health, welfare kind of condition, that's, that's something that we always approve. We also try to be sensitive to what people are sensing or working with, and, and having recognized this last year, especially in the fall, with, with school, clerical staff. We've talked about ways that we can support that, especially maybe in that first one to two weeks of enrollment. Is there something that we can provide, not necessarily in terms of overtime, but maybe in terms of extra help? You know, what is it that they need the most, or, or would desire the most to help them in their job? As far as an actual overtime policy, we don't have that, per se. There are rules that govern overtime use through PERS and those kinds of things. But currently, we've asked that overtime be approved, if we know ahead of time. I mean, if, if we have an indication that it might snow in the morning, and we get up and nothing's happened, you know, we, we monitor and adjust as we need to.
Have the, so, I wanted to know what, what measures you put in place so that, that this doesn't happen again? Because I think that's nice averaging a five-year period, but if you, if you look at each individual year, the literal hours crept up exponentially almost. And so, I don't know if we were asking that much more of our people, or if it became somewhat habitual. So, what, what have you done to ensure that we don't overwork our people, or get into this type of situation again?
Well, to start with, we, we just said no more overtime at this point. By adding another position, the intent there was that the jobs that each of these individuals were doing would be encapsulated by additional staff. And just like any other position, we would say if you need overtime, or if you need additional time to do the work, you need to get that approved.
All right. So we haven't instituted any measures or a, a way of, of accounting for an increased workload, or, or anything. You know what I mean? Because this happened once, we're going to most likely grow over the next few years. So, in, in theory, the workloads would go up, and you obviously, you can't just hire at the first increase of workload, right? We get that, but I think a, a smart agency would have a trigger, you know? A, a threshold that says at this level, we will hire another one. But we know that we need a trigger before we get to that level, so that we can take together, take account for the time of what it'll take to hire somebody, or put, put, you know, even find desk space or something. So, can, can I get you to, to work on that, please?
Sure. We'll, we'll discuss that as a management team.
Yeah, and, and I think as, as part of this, I think Richard was even looking into the system itself, because we're talking about most of this being on the payroll system. And is there a way to, and I think AJ may have been looking at this also, is our system antiquated to where, you know, this is an opportunity now, and a good opportunity for us to, to look at that, and, and maybe alleviate, and, and Ryan, let's go in long term, that that would alleviate some of this. And I think all of that's being looked at, and I think that would just go a long ways. I mean, you're right about the overtime, but, but it's the idea of, you know, everybody's running around doing a lot of work and, and doing it well, and it's just now, this gives us the opportunity to, to look and see if a system revamp would, would, would actually help in this area, so.
Well, I agree, and I, I didn't want to drag this out, but as I sort of talked about last meeting, I, I had a phone conversation with Mr. Stokes in December, asking about the overtime. I wrote him an email, asking in January, and again, asked personally in February, and nothing was done, until a letter hit all of us board members, and then it became a big issue. So, so, all I'm, what I'm doing here is I'm saying that I think you lacked oversight, and I would like you to fix that, please. And I, I think that it's sad that you didn't feel compelled to do anything until everybody saw it. So, I mean...
Mr. President, I, I, you know, my concern with this is that, we were talking, you know, Ryan, we were talking a couple hours ago about our educators that are working hard, and that we've got to support them. And our educators go all the way to the top. You know, I haven't seen a person for, I have seen very few people in our district who aren't trying to do a heck of a lot more within every given day than they have time to do. But that also includes our superintendent. And I, you know, I'm not arguing that a mistake wasn't made, but I disagree with the, I disagree that we're at the point of raking somebody over the coals, in the way, the way, in the way that I think we're going about it is the right way to pursue this discussion. That's just my personal opinion.
Well, I think, you know, every time you talk about money anywhere, it's, it's, it's a sensitive issue. But I'll tell you, you're never going to get rid of overtime. Overtime is an essential part of running any business, whether it's a more, you know, something on the public side, or something on the private side. There's, it has to be controlled, it has to be managed, but you're never going to get away from it. You're going to have short-term needs, whether it's, you know, weather emergencies or something like that, that you're going to have to make a quick decision, and you can't adjust people's salaries quick enough to do that. And to Trustee Green's point, we want, we want to start planning ahead, and maybe having a call-in trigger, or what you will, to figure out when these instances, you know, and I think we rely on AJ for some of that, as he's helping, as he's building the budget, to say, here's what we're projecting, here's what we're thinking, this is going to require another position or two in this department. And I think that's how we have to go down the road, but I think we want to be careful. Overreacting's not the right term, but I'll use it anyway, overreacting to overtime. It, it has to happen, there's no way to get around it, and anybody who thinks you can operate without overtime is, is, you know, you, you just can't do it. So, I want to make sure the point is taken, and my understanding of it, though, is that, you know, if we could have a plan, coming back to us, a discussion item, or at some point, an action item, of how we're going to, how we're going to manage and control overtime moving forward, I think that would be helpful, you know? Putting in milestones, doing those things, I think, make a lot of sense. But, you know, and I would also agree with, with Trustee Reynolds, that, you know, these things happen, and I think we can always look back and say, we should have, or we could have managed these things a different way, and in some cases, rightly so. But I think, let's use this as a learning, you know, let's use this as a learning block, and let's see how we move forward, and let's move forward with a plan.
Okay.
AJ? Any here?
I was just going to continue. There's more, I, I know you're excited, sorry. There's not a lot more, so, just finishing up with the expenses after going through this. So, non-staffing costs at this point, I have steady, because I'm still going through this process with all the departments and sites. And I really have to just extend a big thank you to the, the directors and the principals, who have just been outstanding in this process. It's, it's time-consuming, but it has gone, from my perspective, really well so far. The other thing is, this year, we began kind of the first stage of our technology replacement. The computers at Fritsch Elementary were replaced, excuse me. So next year, there's another stage of technology replacement, and that will continue to grow over the next couple of years. That's, that's the other, excuse me, the, another large concern we have looking forward is what, what those costs are going to look like. But we'll, in the next couple of months, we'll have a better feel for that in relation to total staffing, and kind of what the impact of that is, so. The, the transfers, the only one I really want to, I guess, two that I want to point out, based on how I understand class size reduction, and I have not gotten a clear answer from the Department of Education on this yet, I, I believe that we are going to receive significantly less money for class size reduction next year than we did this year, based on how they calculate, how I understand that they calculate it. So I'm looking for some more guidance, and there's supposed to be some coming from them. But that's something that, it's, it's an increase of over $400,000, or, I'm sorry, a decrease of $400,000 in that funding that would require a transfer from the general fund to cover. So, that's something that I'm, I'm still looking at. The other thing I want to bring to your attention, too, is it looks like next year, for the first time in about seven years, we would have to make a transfer to the summer school fund. So there's a Fund 271 that is specifically for summer school programs in the district. The, the last time we made a tran, transfer there, and I should say, the, the summer school fund, by its nature of the, the fees we collect and the costs of it, it always loses money. It, it just does, that's the way it is. So, in, in the current setup that we have for it, so, my predecessor's predecessor, Bob Anderson, about seven, eight, nine years ago, made a tran- That's the way it is. So, in the current setup that we have for it, so my predecessor's predecessor, Bob Anderson, about seven, eight, nine years ago, made a transfer of $100,000 from the general fund to the summer school fund. And that's kind of kept it going since then, along with some help from grants and some other things. But it's at a point where it's probably going to need another transfer. I may request one actually at the end of this fiscal year, depending on how things are going. But otherwise, next year, we likely have to make a transfer into the summer school fund. So, that's those. So, at this point, and what I consider to be, you know, there's a lot of unknowns, and I'm taking an extremely conservative view at this point, would be a deficit of about $1.1 million. I believe that that will improve over the next, I think, just even next time I come to you, because I'll have some more information. And again, it's very, very conservative at this point. There's a lot of competitive grants that we still have to consider. We don't, there could be, there is a lot of money out there that could really help us out, but we really don't know what that looks like. We're still waiting on some answers. There's also the pay-for-performance issue that we need to figure out, which may actually, will be an extra cost. The Airmark contract, they had put together a guarantee for us this year of no more than a $218,046 deficit. And the contract next year would have some similar guarantee, probably not that same number. So, we'll have to see what that looks like. And then I still have to finish the rest of the budget-building process with all of our sites and departments.
So, A.J., that's the other thing when you said additional positions, because a lot of the state ed things are grants now that we have to go after, do we have the personnel intact to do that, to keep up with all these competitive grants?
I'll defer to Mrs. King.
Because that was my big concern, and the legislature ended up, it's when they said that we had to compete for everything. So, I was just wondering.
Well, usually, those grants are for the biennium, and this time, around there for one year. So, that means we have to apply for them, do the needs assessment, apply for, write the grant, apply for them, and then, you know, implement them. And so, with the social worker grant, we hired a project manager for that, just because it was just going to tip us over, and we were able to do that for that. Mr. Dave Clario will do a report on the social worker grant in an upcoming board meeting. And he's been very helpful, because that's also an area of expertise that he has that we haven't come up through the system with. And we're creating something from scratch, brand new. Read by Three, we're doing that in-house. Great teachers and leaders. Dr. Medina is kind of running that grant with our curriculum development. And then the other one is with Jumpstart and our AP. So, Mrs. Fuson, Mr. Zona, and myself are working with that one. And so, we're race to the top, not race to the top. Read by Three is coming out with like triple the amount of money that they had from before. And there may be some other things with that. We might look into that, having somebody to support us on that one, as we look at the grants down the road, doing something more like these project managers, just to help us with that work.
Just a comment on the social workers, because isn't that a grant that these positions are just until the end of this year, until we get the grant renewed? And if we're relying on the social workers to help with the attendance, is that something we need to put into our budget as well to consider how, if we, the possibility if we don't get that? And then, do we look at counselor positions at the elementary level or something if that didn't work? I don't know.
So, Mr. Fueeling said that the budget meetings with the directors and the principals was going well, and he's probably rolling his eyes when he's looking at me and thinking of my mine budget, because, you know, I budget for certain things, then a grant comes out and try to put certain things from the general fund in that. And it's just, the budget's kind of a revolving door. So, I think at this time, that I think the money's there for the social worker grant, based on what the legislative session put aside. How that's going to come out, I think there's some things in the works to, with the state and the State Department in making that more sustainable. So, we'll just have to see on that one. I don't know that we're going to need to put something in the general fund for social workers in this budget, because I think there's going to be something more coming out. And I think the state realizes that when that came out, it wasn't a two-week turnaround to get all these social workers in the building and going in mid-year.
Mr. Stokes?
Well, and Trustee Wilkie, you may have been considering additional staff for Mrs. Dockery to actually help write the competitive grants. When I chatted with Mrs. Dockery, we did, we covered that ground to see, you know, how are you feeling? Are you able to keep up with all this? Because it is a tremendous amount of work. And her response was essentially, I'm keeping up. I'm able to do what's needed. She was worried that bringing someone else in, kind of with the short amount of time that's needed to write and to turn around, might not, might not help her as much, because the individual wouldn't know as much about the inner workings and the processes associated with the district as she does. But she said it would certainly be helpful to maybe have someone that she could contract with that might go after federal dollars, for example, the science grant and some of those other pieces. So, that's kind of her mindset right now. And then, just in terms of whether or not we qualify for some of these funds in the second year, I think we have really a good chance, because especially where we were funded on the front end, and we've received some great feedback from those who graded our grants. So, I think we're really in a good place. Plus, there were a lot of the rural folks that just didn't even try for the money, because they don't have the staff to write for and then to manage the grants.
So, a compliment to Mrs. Dockery. When I was a building principal and was looking at some funding from UNR and was attending a grant meeting on behalf of Valerie, and they were saying that she was feared, that when she puts in for a grant, that just means, okay, everybody step back, you know, which is a positive thing for our district. And so, I see that now that she's returned to that position, that that's quickly becoming the same thing again. But she has, we have a teacher that is pursuing her administrative license, that was interested in grant writing, and she's working with Mrs. Dockery for the short term, just to work on some of the grants that are really, really kind of the repeat, you know, like the Kitty Vento grant. It doesn't really change in content, but just needs updates. And so, she's kind of mentoring this person, and that person is being able to do some of the legwork for Valerie, and will be able to provide another professional development experience for another one of our teachers.
A.J., a quick question. Couple of weeks ago, I saw the article in the newspaper and the press release out of the governor's office about reductions and stuff like that. And I couldn't, really, after, the more I read it, the less I could make sense of it. But I assume you aren't forecasting any effect on school budgets from whatever we should draw from that?
So, as I understood the article, the tax revenues aren't coming in exactly where we were hoping. Not far off, but just not exactly where. And so, the, basically, the shot was put out for departments to be prepared for potentially a 5% budget cut. But really, it sounded like it wasn't so much that, it was the expectation that revenues were going to continue decreasing, but that they just really weren't possibly going to increase as quickly as the governor's original projections had hoped. So, in this next year, everything is really already set. So, there's, I'm not concerned in the next year. My concern is in the next legislative session, and when the governor's budget comes out, and what kind of concerns there are. Ultimately, you know, if there's problems at the state level financially, there's going to be problems at our level financially. So, but as of right now, for next year, I'm not concerned.
Anything else?
That's all I got.
Any other questions from the board? All right. It's always a fun topic, so we'll look forward to seeing you again.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay. You may as well stay there. We're on item 13, designation of independent audit firm for fiscal year 2016, as required by NRS 354.624. And this is for possible action. A.J.
Thank you, President Cassioppo. Every year, as you just read, we are required by NRS to designate an auditor for the coming audit for the current fiscal year. Back in 2012, we started with an audit firm. Actually, they were known at that point as Bullard Macy. They're now known as Silva and Company. It's still the same company. And they've been completing, they've completed the last four audits for us. They also do the audit work for Douglas County School District, Lyon County School District, and Churchill County School District, along with many other municipalities in the northern Nevada area. When they came on, I just, I was looking back at the history of this. The year before they started, the audit firm that we were using, we paid them $93,000 that year, and it had been in the 80s. And so, when I look at the, Mr. Silva, who is presented to you before, has proposed the fee for next year be the same as this year, which was $63,400. We're still reaping significant savings from that. So, at this point, I would recommend approval of using them again as our auditor for the audit coming this fiscal year.
No, I appreciate that. I was glad you mentioned that. I was going to bring that up, because I remember those conversations about what we were spending, and I, and I tell you, in my business, anytime we can, we do it, too, but anytime you can find somebody that's willing to work with you and not increase their price every year, even the slightest bit, you know, there aren't many out there that are doing that for folks.
Sure.
So, I think in that regard, they've been conscientious and responsible to us.
Sure.
Okay. Any comments on the board, questions?
Aren't they under like a three-year contract? Is this the first year of their three-year contract, or is it a year, we didn't do a contract within multiple years?
No. No. Just year to year.
Yeah. Okay. Any additional questions or comments? If not, somebody want to entertain a motion?
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the audit firm of Silva and Company LLC as the auditors for fiscal year 2016 for a contract amount not to exceed $63,400. I should know better.
Do we have a second? We have a second. Motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Comments from the public? Still two people? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, A.J. Moving on to item 14, informational update on the Nevada educator performance framework for discussion only. Dr. Delphin.
And I thought your discussion in the executive summary was outstanding, by the way. And I'm good with that.
All right. I'm good. What have you done for us lately?
That was, I'm Jose Delphin for the record. Thank you, Trustee Reynolds. This is the most unsugarcoated exact summary I've ever written in eight years. It pretty much summarizes everything that I know about the NEPF. It is very mixed. It is troublesome in time. It is taking a lot of effort on every licensed staff that I know of in our district. It is complex. There's lots of gaps in the law. There's things that I'm still trying to figure out, you know, as your liaison between the state, NRS 391, and with our staff, trying to make sense of it all. Mr. Wallace and I have spent, I don't know how many hours of time trying to decipher some of this stuff, and really, with little guidance from the state. So, with all that said, I think we're doing fairly well, given so much uncertainty and so much of the gaps in this new evaluation system that has been imposed on us. I'm really surprised we don't get more complaints, to be honest. I do miss our old eval. I look at it as the good old days right now, because we had it down. It took so many years for our old eval to be very automatic. And this year, it doesn't feel automatic at all, as the Jack survey is brought out and speaking with staff. Administrators are taking their spring break, and they're working on evaluations. So, that's what I have for you.
I will say, I think it's because you guys did a good job of recognizing this was going to be a big change coming into the year. And obviously, not every training worked like it was intended, but the information was there saying, we recognize this is going to be cumbersome. And so, every educator administrator I've spoken with, they all realize that it's just going to suck. But I think that's because you guys did a good job of saying it's going to suck.
That's the key, right?
But we're going to all go with it together, go through it together. So, I think you've done good.
Well, thank you. All I can say is Maryland and Wisconsin are in for the Sweet 16. That's what we're rooting for here.
And Oregon.
Oregon, sorry. Forgot.
Dr. Delphin, yeah, I, too, want to reiterate, I appreciate it. I think when we had a discussion, I guess it has been a couple hours ago now, about, you know, teacher-staff appreciation, how do we, you know, and how do we appreciate them? And this is kind of double-edged in that regard, because the folks that are doing really well are going to get judged accordingly. And then, of course, there's going to be folks that get judged a little different way. But I think it's going to be really important, as we go forward, to focus on that key of how are we going to, you know, not just motivate, you know, people, but, you know, really thank them for the hard work that they're doing, and those that maybe aren't meeting whatever benchmark needs to be established, making sure it's clear how we're going to work with them to get them up to that level.
I agree. Trustee Cassioppo, and, you know, as I look at that timeline, this is straight from the Teacher and Leaders Council slide that I just took a screenshot of. We're going to get to student performance data next year at 20%. So, I expect that the sucky level to increase just a little bit more, because that's just going to add another layer of what does this mean for me as an administrator? What does this mean to me as a teacher? And that's still undefined. As you look at that table, if you look at 2016 and 17, 10% is going to be statewide data. And one thing that doesn't show is they're going to look at growth as well as reducing the gap, and also what the proficiency will be, whether it's SBAK, or, and of course, whatever the state decides to do. And then, 10% is going to be on us. What are our measures for how we rate our student performance? And then, the following year, it gears up to 40%. So, I have my own opinions about all of this, but, you know, of course, I'm just one voice. But a lot of that happens at the ledge. So, my wife is a teacher, and she's gotten a recording from the NSA that I play over and over again regarding, you know, what changes teachers might want to have or input. And I think that's one of them. You've got to really talk to your legislature and your reps and make sure it's fair. My own personal professional opinion is this is driven by Clark in Washoe County. I mean, if we look at a ranking in the nation as 50th, Carson isn't 50th of anything. We aren't. It's not representative of our district and how we achieve our graduation rates. We're certainly above average. I don't know where we would rate in the nation. I'd like to know, as far as school districts, our size. But that would take an enormous amount of research on everybody's part. But I know the state board, there's some vociferous people that are on that, and they want change yesterday. And that's mostly Clark County. It's not hitting anywhere up here that I know of in our little slice of heaven. So, unless you have a magic wand, folks, that's my report.
Yeah. Just one more question, because we talked about it a while back, at least on our piece of the pie that we can control. Do we have some flexibility if we decide? I think, I want to be careful if we can control it, that we don't evaluate this over, say, one school year, because in any given year... one school year, because in any given year, you might have classes that excel, classes that don't excel. But if you can average it out over a period of time, then I think maybe you get a better assessment of how an educator's doing. Do we, will we have that flexibility and to what degree?
I sure hope so. And I need to work with Mrs. Kima, of course, work with our teachers and also our admin to figure out what is fair. And that's really the bottom line. What is fair? What makes sense for all of us? And with you, of course. And that's yet to be determined. I wish we had S-Back last year, to be honest, so that we could see how well Race to the Top compares with the rest of the state. My prediction is we would have done pretty well compared to the rest of the districts.
Yeah, go ahead, Laura.
Just a philosophical point. When we taught, when we had our Race to the Top report tonight, and we talked about the most important thing is the quality of the instruction in the classroom and the teacher who's doing it. And we were investing so much in teacher development. And then to see that in 2017, the instructional practice will count for less than half of a teacher's evaluation. It's, it seems to be completely opposite of what we're val, what we're trying to create with our professional development and how to improve that. And then to take that away, I really don't like that.
I don't think anyone does. I know that when I've attended TLCs, no one wants that threshold of student performance to be anywhere even above 10%, to be honest. So it was really a political move, I think, on the last legislation and legislature to make that such a high mark. Because no one in the TLC thought 20 or 40% would have been really fair. But somebody thought it was good. And I think we call them the governor, but that's just my opinion.
I think, as you said, it is what it is. We'll wait and see how it shakes out. But hopefully, we'll have a little more, you know, a little more flexibility to cater it to our district.
I agree.
So any additional questions? All right, seeing a yawn, we're going to move on to item 15.
I should leave like Ron.
Discussion and review of Carson City School District bylaws, 010, structure, and 120, authority and powers. First reading for discussion only. Mr. Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. This information is in your packets. And just represented this evening from the bylaws are two articles. And the original goal, I think, when we started talking about review of the bylaws, was to see if indeed there were aspects that could one be brought into greater alignment or agreement with our strategic plan, or given the fact that it's been several years since the bylaws, and even then, not all of the bylaws had been at least reviewed and revised in October 25, 2011. The opportunity for us tonight is to have a discussion. Trustee Green had indicated at our last meeting, at the very least, is it truly the direction that we want to go to review all of our policies once every four years? And so that's also up for consideration and discussion this evening. So I didn't take an attempt to try and put forward any ideas or any thoughts, feeling that these items truly do represent thinking and philosophy of the school board.
Well, you know, Richard, under, and Trustee Green, I think it was, you know, it was conscientious of him to bring this up. And we do need to decide how we're going to do this because under authorities and powers, it says it shall be the duty of the board to reprise its policies once every four years. So we either, we either stick with that or we have to change the policy to make another adjustment. You know, and I don't think we necessarily have to revise them. We have to review them. And if they're fine the way they are, we go ahead and, you know, we review them and approve them as is. But I think it's important to keep them current and keep them relevant to not only the sign of the times, but to the strategic plan and whatnot. So I'm not against doing them every four years. I, in fact, I think we should to comply with this. But there's a couple ways we can do it. And I'm not sure, maybe that's a discussion we should have, is do we take a chunk of these each board meeting? Do we maybe talk with Mr. Pavlakis and see if we can set up workshops and, you know, get through them in that regard? So, you know, I think it's a discussion we should have. And Steve, I'll open it up to you to, I don't know if you had to discuss that, if you had something else.
No, I did have a thought on the process. I don't know why we can't consider using our consent agenda process and be supplied with a certain number of the policies each month or however that are, you know, maybe a month and a half or what, whatever, in advance. And then unless there is a change in the NRS or a desire by someone on the board to, you know, to bring that up and make, consider changes in it, I think we, I think we can use the consent agenda to simplify the process.
And then on top of that, I think we should use the policy committee that we have to look at those and figure out which ones could be put on the consent agenda so that it's not a staff, you know, big-time thing, but using the committee to look and say, okay, these haven't changed, let's put it on the consent agenda. And then from there, if we can, can we do that consent agenda with the policies?
Sure. Yeah, I don't necessarily have a problem with that. I just want to make sure that we give them each their due attention and we don't, they don't slip through the cracks. But I think if we have a policy committee, it certainly makes sense to use them. Other, you know, that's, that's why they're there. But I just want to make sure everybody gets a chance to give some input on how they think, you know, we should go through because I don't think there's a right answer necessarily. But I want to make sure everybody gets to weigh in. So, right?
I like Mr. Reynolds' idea. I think that's a really good idea. And then, I don't know how we'd work it. I was going to just ask Mr. Stokes what he was comfortable with, but that might be better if we just went through them. And then, I mean, if there's no reason to do anything, there's no reason to even kick it down to the committee. We just write reviewed on it and that's that. So I think that's interesting to put forward. I would, I would like that.
Okay.
And have you looked at, to see how many policies we have? Is it, is it, is it applicable to do it every four years? Is there enough, is there too many policies? Do we need to do it every five years or?
There are nine sections. And it's, it's big. There's a lot.
We used it for a seat for the kids at the dinner table for years.
But, you know, over a four-year period, I don't mind. I mean, I haven't read that one yet. But over a four-year period, I wouldn't mind. Yeah, but you're that kind of person. No, I think to Trustee Reynolds' point, though, I think that's a, I think that's a valid way to do it. And I think between our policy committee and the consent agenda, we can, I think we can get through it a bit more efficiently that way. And unless anybody sees a flaw in that plan, I think that's a viable way to move forward. Laura?
Just since I'm on the policy committee, I'm just wondering how we can organize, because some of the policies we've updated right recently. And so how, I don't want to go through every page to figure out which ones do in the next, which one hasn't been done in four years, what the timeline is. And I'm not sure how we can set that up.
I think, yeah.
Yeah, there'd be like a, maybe a master list. And then when one, yeah.
But we don't want more overtime.
We don't want more overtime.
I think you'll find it simple.
It'd be, yeah. Ms. Cortez gets to assign us homework. No, but maybe, you know, like when we do a new policy, it just goes to the bottom. And then whatever it takes, it naturally filter most.
But it is in our summary. She does the summary motions, and those are in there. Let's see which ones are revised, so you could take that upon yourself, too.
Okay, well, this is a discussion item. So, I mean, we're, we don't have to make an, we don't, but Richard, you had more to add to this?
I was just going to say, item D under Article 2 talks about a seal for the, for the school district. And I have an example. I was just going to pass it along.
Yeah, I have what you said.
We use that on a variety of different things. For example, I can just think of every summer, I approve the foreign exchange students who are going to be coming into the district, and it requires a formal seal. And that's been in our office for as long as I know. And we use it for official things.
Well, I think.
Yeah, and our bonds, that's true.
And I think the fact that we have one and it's been in existence, it just says we have to adopt one.
And use.
Yeah. So apparently, we're using it, and it's kind of grandfathered in. So I'm thinking we've, we've complied.
Okay. Well, and, you know, let me know the role that you want me to play in this as well. And certainly happy to work towards whatever process the board selects.
Is there consensus that four years is reasonable, or is five years?
I guess you could put it to the test. And if it doesn't work out, we can come back and change it.
Yeah. I think, why don't we leave it at, my opinion would be, let's leave it at four years. And now that we're, we need to just put forth a conscious effort to do it. And yeah, let's use this as a trial run and see if we can comply. Because if not, people are going to hold us accountable, and they should.
If you guys are comfortable with it, I can work with Renee and maybe try to come up with schedule.
Who's on the committee besides myself and Ryan? I think Ryan's on it, too. Is there, are there other members of that?
I believe that that is structured as a superintendent's committee, so Mr. Stokes would have a record of who else might be on that committee.
It may be additional staff, not just additional time for the trustees to put into it.
So I guess, Mr. Stokes, probably the way to move forward is, since it's a superintendent's committee, yeah, why don't you call it? And then we'll have a meeting of the committee and kind of get things started. And the first meeting could just be talking about how we are going to get things started.
Oh, did you want to talk about, just one thing that I saw from Joe's notes, and I've looked at, too. Under the structure and the composition, the Carson City School District has been comprised of all the area within the boundaries of the Carson City. Do we want to be present tense? The Carson City School District is comprised?
Yeah. Look at that, we're racing forward already.
Hey, we just made a change. And we can put this one as been reviewed.
Okay. Any other discussion related to this topic? If not, we're going to move on to item 16, approval of the consent agenda.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Motion in a second. Any board discussion? Comments on the public? Down to one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item, item 17, informational items for discussion only. No, no action will be taken. Do we have any discussion on the informational items? Seeing none. We're going to move on to item 18, request for future agenda topics. Dion.
So I'm, this is kind of a joke request, but as I've told some of you, and as you know, this is going to be my last meeting as a trustee. I'm resigning from the board. My family's moving to Reno, and our house is for sale. And so depending on when it sales, sells, we might have to move in with friends. And I'm just worried about having where I live be a problem, even through the end of the year, which we are staying in the, in the school district through the end of the year. But I just wanted to just take a couple minutes, I know it's late, but to talk about, you know, how, how much I've enjoyed serving in this position and just, in just being a part of this district, being a parent in the years that my child, you know, from helping out in the classroom with your wife and spending time there, to strategizing with Mrs. Dockery on how to improve our gifted programs, you know, five, six years ago, to, you know, really seeing the growth and the, you know, the, working with the community, being part of those meetings when we developed the strategic plan through Ron's leadership and getting the community involved and, and, you know, going to this learned-centered model, which I really think is a strong concept. And I know there's back and forth on that. But I just think over the course of the time that I've been part of this district, that, you know, I have seen that growth and I have seen the change. And I've seen it like in a we've grown up kind of way. We're growing up as a district. We're becoming more professional. We're responding to the needs of our students. We're being flexible. We're offering different opportunities. And, you know, I, I will, you know, always watch, excited to watch the continued success of this district, even as I'm, is, as my family is in, is in, you know, embarking on a new adventure as we transition to Reno. So I just wanted to make those few comments and say thank you all very much.
Well, Dion, thanks. Thanks for the kind words. We're going to miss you. You've been, oh, no, no, go ahead.
So the agenda item is that you have to talk about my replacement.
No, thank you. We've enjoyed, I just, I can't speak for the whole board, but I think, I think I can say we've really enjoyed having you on the board. You've provided some insight and, you know, some, some really quality beneficial dialogue. So just in keeping it short, thank you for everything you've done. And we will miss you as part of the board.
Thank you.
And Richard, yeah, maybe, since it isn't tomorrow yet, how does that work when we have a vacancy now? Yeah, we're going to, we can post that. But could you walk us through how we move forward?
It's been a little while, but it's not a new occasion. We have had board members in the past resign. And typically, we advertise the position, we vet any applicants through my office against the, the boundary designations, and make sure that the individual who's shown interest actually does live in, in the zoned area. And then, once we have candidates, we bring them to a board meeting, and the board gets a chance to interview them. And then a selection is made here during an open session. And a new person is named, and then they, they remain in that spot until the next general election, where the individual who's placed on the board can apply for the vacant seat, or any other person who qualifies living in that zone can also apply at that general election time.
Great. And that initial time that they're on the board, does that, does that count towards their total amount of time they can serve on a board? Right? That's included in that, so. Yeah. Is it, Mike's saying it is. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not fully, I don't understand if that's true or not. And, but I defer to Mr. Pavlakis.
No, and that's fine. I think we're a few years away from that. So I was just asking as a, just a question. Okay. Any additional comments? Any, any additional future agenda items? Steve?
Sorry to bring this up, but I have two thoughts. One of them, input from the, from the board. We were asked previously tonight to reconsider agendizing the collision course. And I guess, I question unless there's something really new and new information, if we aren't just leading people on, if we re-agendize it. I think we've covered this ground. And so I guess what I'm suggesting, Joe, if you and Mr. Stokes decide that there's something really earth-shaking or whatever, or something of value, but otherwise, I'm not sure we just aren't continuing to punish the people as opposed to changing anything. That's my only thought there. And I don't know if anybody feels differently.
No, I think, Steve, thank you for that. Yeah. I'll talk with Mr. Stokes about that. But I think, I had asked a question if he had new, if the speaker had some new information. And I think maybe what we can do is maybe, maybe reach out to him and find out what this, what the information is. And because I could.
Decide if it is, ma'am.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, I think if we're, to have it as another agenda item and talk about the same stuff again is just, you know, belaboring the same stuff. That, you know, the decision, I think, has been made. And it would take some, some new information for us to consider otherwise.
The other suggestion that I have, because I think we need to start figuring out how to reduce our meeting times. But I'd like, maybe one way to go about it, and to reduce our meeting times. But I'd like, maybe one way to go about it, and it's just a thought, and maybe Renee had to have some input or think about it, but maybe we need on each item, put down the projected time, actually on the agenda that we think the item's going to take. At least it'd give us some feeling. And if we did come up with these meetings where, you know, it looked like, wow, this is going to go a little nuts on us, you know, there probably a good amount of the information tonight could have happened at a different meeting, possibly. But we need to do, we need to do something. This is, has been getting a little worse again.
Yeah, no, I agree with you. I, I think we ought to have a goal in mind as to how long we expect a meeting to go. And if we assign a time to each agenda item, we can see if we're getting close to that benchmark, and, and we can control it that way. I've sat on a number of boards, and we've done that. It's, it's worked fairly well. So, okay, any additional discussion on that, or future items? If not, let's call this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.